Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the special city council meeting for the city of Brentwood. We have a quorum, so let's begin. If we could have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Maloney.
Present.
Vice Mayor Pearson.
Present.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Councilmember Orlman.
Here.
Mayor Meyer.
Here, and can you join me in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The public comment time for tonight's closed session items will be three minutes each.
At this time, members present in the chamber are permitted to address the council on items listed on the closed session agenda. I do have one speaker card, Danny.
I'm going to have to speak quickly. I'll start with the punchline to ensure that the record shows that I'm speaking upon two of the closed items that you're going to be talking about today. Sellers in particular, don't sell it yet. Let's force the county to answer a simple question. Why not consider this property for the fire station? The property on Sellers is a five-minute drive from downtown, AKA Diane Burgess' special interest site, AKA the veterans' palat a land. And this is five minutes without lights and sirens. Why aren't we selling this to the county? Or the better question, why isn't the county buying it? I suspect Diane Burgess, I mean, the county fire executive, I mean, the county. I'm sorry, all three are interchangeable. Why aren't they interested? I assume there's no interest considering there isn't a resolution with the veterans and the fire station. Seller is zoned for agriculture. Okay, we've twisted and turned zones all the time. Hell, the county can change codes to give Sino an advantage, why not rezone Sellers? Sellers is literally a line of sight clear to Knightsen, one right turn away from Balfour, which gives you access to four, which gives you access to Oakley, Antioch, Pittsburgh, da-da-da-da-da-da. Now, before coming, I looked at chats today just to get a temperature about what's going on. Not particularly this meeting, just the firehouse. And people have been, at the very least, misled. For example, there is word out there that Amber isn't considered due to environmental hazards. The one that the fire station actually did have and decided not to use it. Environmental hazards. Are you kidding me? What other lies is Diane Burgess or Contra Costa Fire throwing out there? Let's play Sellers out a little bit more. Like I said, it's zoned for ag. Now, if the buyer is planning to keep it ag, that's great. However, other previously zoned properties are now developments. My son has a development. He can see the site from where he lives. So if the argument from Contra Costa is zoning, that sounds like a Diane Burgess misdirect. If you sell Sellers, you're giving the county an out. So please, when you're in closed session, consider keeping Sellers for the county.
Thank you.
I have no additional speaker cards.
Thank you. At this time, we will recess to closed session. Can I get a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
We're going to go ahead and get started. We're going to go ahead and get started, so if you want to take a seat, please do so.
We're gonna go ahead and get started, so if you want to take a seat, please do so. Welcome, everyone, to the regular City Council Successor Agency meeting for the city of Brentwood. We have a quorum. If we could begin the meeting, can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Maloney?
Present.
Vice Mayor Pearson?
Present.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Here.
Councilmember Orlemans?
Here.
Mayor Meyer?
Here. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Public comment time for tonight's items will be three minutes each.
At this time, the public present in the council chamber are permitted to address the city council on items that are not on the agenda, items that are listed under presentations, informational reports or on the consent calendar, requests for future agenda items, new requests. Comments for the meeting's detailed agenda items or business items should be made when those items are called. Please limit your remarks to three minutes. The microphone will be muted when the timer expires. First card I have is Rob Brant.
And Amanda, could I really quickly just pop in and say that we are officially closing closed session and have nothing to report out? Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Rob Brant, and I just wanted to come this evening and say thank you to the city council and your staff for your patronage. We greatly appreciate it. We've been in business in Brentwood, which we've made our home and our community for over 53 years. So, or at 53 years, and churning when I say we'll keep going. I'm second generation. Bill was my dad, and I have two nephews and my daughter Katie involved in the business also. But I just wanted to reach out and say, you know, it doesn't come lightly. We work really hard for our community, for the city, and when my brother puts the bids together, we have a grace of 3%, which he doesn't utilize. We always come in low. And again, I just want to say thank you for your entrusting in us on selling us, selling your vehicles, servicing your vehicles, and all of that. I know most of the staff. I don't know all of the council people. I have a fellow Rotarian with us here on the council. Thank you. And anyway, as I don't want to use up my three minutes, I guess I got a minute and 38 left. But you know, the staff that we have here at the city, I've seen a lot of staff come and go. I've seen a lot of council people come and go over the 50 years I've been around. And the staff we have right now, it's A-plus. I mean, you guys ought to, you have some good people to work with, and I just want to give them a plug because it makes your job easier to get things done on the decisions that you make. So, thank you for your time. Appreciate it. And again, thanks for your patronage. Thank you.
Next speaker is Danny, followed by Tripty, followed by Daniel.
Good evening again. Before I go into my diatribe, word on the street is that I own Sellers Avenue. And I just want the trolls out there to know, I'm willing to buy Sellers right now for five bucks. I will, I promise you, if you sold it to me for five bucks, I would give it to the county so that they can build a firehouse there. I swear to God, you sell it to me for $5, council, I will give it to the county. Now, in all seriousness, I'll be blunt. Diane Burgess does not care about veterans. We have people here tonight, and they're gonna come up and they're gonna speak as they have spoken the last several sessions. As some of them may know, I know I've been hard on you as a group and individually, but I had one of those "oh" moments. That "oh" moment being Diane Burgess and the good old "he bono," who benefits? Going back to the land I wished I owned on Sellers, Sellers is a five-minute drive from here or from there to here, and that's without the lights and sirens. And yet, veterans will come up here and they will plead their case. But I, and I know there are things you wish you can say, but you can't, okay? I had to get my mind around that. So, let me focus on who should be getting our full attention, and that's Diane Burgess. Again, I haven't seen her come up and talk about it herself. I mean, we've been here. I don't think she's been to the Veterans Hall. I don't think that she has done anything other than, you know, leave a message and I'll get back to you type of thing. Diane Burgess does not care about us with respect to fire. One of my earliest gripes was the overbuilding of homes relative to the fire protection. When the sky turned orange, I was up here and I was complaining like nobody's business. So, it's not about not having a firehouse, and I wish people would stop saying that. It is about where the firehouse is. If Diane Burgess cared, Sellers makes sense, and I won't go into detail why because I only have 10 seconds left. But she doesn't care about the city. She doesn't care about vets because if she had, there'd be a conversation. You guys would come.
Namaste, Mayor Susanna Meyer and city council members. My name is Tripti Malhotra, proud resident of Brentwood City. Today, I want to briefly share the recently concluded 18th Annual Health for Humanity Yogathon, a nationwide event organized by Hindu Swayam Sevak Sangh, known as HSS, a nonprofit socio-cultural Hindu organization with over 235 branches in 164 cities and 34 states, including California. HSS conducts a Hindu values education program for Hindu families and community service activities such as food drives, providing hot meals to shelters, and other services. The Health for Humanity Yogathon event began on January 18th and concluded on February 2nd. Sun salutation is a traditional yogic practice that involves moving through a series of poses that flow together in a graceful, continuous sequence combined with breathing exercises. Since its inception in 2007, participants from 43 states have actively participated, irrespective of their genders, races, ethnicities, nationalities, and faiths, enthusiastically participated in achieving spiritual, mental, and physical well-being, making it truly a DEI event. It was recognized as a part of congressional records in 2017. Acknowledging the community benefits of this initiative, the Let's Move Initiative of the then-first lady Michelle Obama declared HSS as a partner in 2012. This year, 7,122 participants all across the nation, including various organizations and HSS, participated in the HSS Health for Humanity Yogathon from the Contra Costa area and performed a total of 135,667 sun salutations. Students from 25 schools across Contra Costa performed more than 47,000 sun salutations. Three other local organizations joined and performed 5,776 sun salutations. We also have conducted several train-the-trainer sessions for PE teachers and school district staff members so that they can conduct their own sessions throughout the year for students. Acknowledging this community-wide health awareness program, community leaders and many elected officials across the nation have appreciated this initiative and encouraged their residents to participate and gain the benefits of an overall healthy lifestyle. Health for Humanity Yogathon has received numerous proclamations from mayors, governors, US congressmen, and US senators, including Contra Costa and surrounding cities. On behalf of Hindu Swayam Sevak Sangh, we would like to thank you for your support and recognition of the 18th Annual Health for Humanity Yogathon event. Thank you, and then you bet.
Can I ask the speaker what date the event is? I don't think we got that. I know we can ask a question.
The event started on January 25th and ended on February 2nd of this year, and it happens every year. So, thank you for every year.
Thank you.
Before we move on with public comments, I've been asked to remind everyone to please refrain from speaking or having any kind of reactions to the, to the comments so that everyone feels safe in speaking and we can all hear each other. Thank you.
Mr. Duran, followed by Paul, followed by Mr. Owens.
Good evening, Anna Mayor, council members. My name is Daniel Duran. I'm the commander of American Legion Post 202 here in Brentwood. I'm also the president of the Brentwood Memorial Veterans Building. Now that I've got that out of the way, I'd like to speak to you as a citizen of the city of Brentwood. I would like to thank the city and its planning department for the wonderful job they did on parcel 016190033. Guys did a wonderful job. I don't understand why the county said, "We don't want it." Although I did get some paperwork on it, I just haven't had a chance to look at it. But I wanted to thank you because I know that you weren't there, all of you, but it was a great job, fabulous job, and I still don't understand why the county said no. So, thank you again.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city staff. I read Diane Burgess's response in the Brentwood press last week with great interest. Her claim that the county's legal analysis allows them to do whatever they want with the property in the building is misleading at best and an outright fabrication at worst. In her statement, she carefully cited Military Veterans Code, MCV, Section 1262-F to justify the county's authority over the land. However, she failed to mention Military Veteran Code 1266, which clearly states that once a city or county has provided a veterans facility, that property is dedicated to the public purpose and cannot be revoked unless specific legal conditions are met. MVC 1266 states, whenever a city or county has provided and maintained a building for the use of the veterans, the provision constitutes a dedication to a public purpose, and the city or county may not revoke the dedication unless substitute facilities are provided, the veterans consent, or the property has been abandoned. You can't just cherry pick what you want. Supervisor Burgess omitted this critical section of the law, which directly contradicts her assertion that the county can do whatever it wants with the land. Why is this key legal provision being ignored by her? At the end of her letter, she accused a small number of residents of misleading the public with the self-serving misinterpretation of the law. Her attempt at subtlety was like fingernails on a chalkboard. We know who she's speaking about. But the real misrepresentation is coming from the county, whether it's omitting key legal statutes, failing to acknowledge the special tax that purchase a land, or ignoring the fact that this land was dedicated to veterans' use. Let's be clear, this is not about opposing a fire station. We all want one. The veterans in the community support a new station, not just in this location. Brentwood doesn't need a massive oversized fire station in the heart of downtown, a permanent reminder of the county's failure to respect veterans, local businesses, and Brentwood residents. Supervisor Burgess needs to find another location for her legacy project, one that respects both veterans and the community. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Miss Mayor and Council. My name is Marquise Owens, and I'm a resident here in Brentwood, and I'd like to thank the council for its hard work and its job of keeping Brentwood a beautiful community, an inviting community for all of us to be here. That is one of the reasons that my family and I chose to live here was because of the safety and the different things of that nature that the city offers. But I do rightly have a question or questions and/or concerns from a humanitarian standpoint, as well as potential safety standpoints later on in the future. As we know, as cities are becoming tougher on that unhoused population, individuals are dispersed around in different communities. And I have noticed as our neighboring cities have taken a tougher stance on the unhoused population, I have seen an increase in unhoused individuals here in Brentwood. And from a humanitarian standpoint, my question is, is what resources do we have available to assess these individuals and to find out what we can do to help them so that there is not an increase in unhoused individuals here in the city? And we can help them get back on their feet or so as to not increase any problems with them being discriminated against or even a rise in crime. It usually, when I have seen unhoused individuals, they have not been in places more than a day or so. But I've noticed, at least since this past Saturday, there has been a group of unhoused individuals right on, let me see, Lone Tree Way, right behind the Shell Station, and it seems to be growing. I did see the police interacting with the individuals this morning, but it remains. Not from a standpoint that I'm saying that anyone should be kicked out because everyone deserves housing. And it could be me in that situation, and so I am sensitive to that. So, my question is, as to the city, what are we doing? What resources do we have available from a humanitarian standpoint to assess and to assist these individuals to get back on their feet? Thank you.
Can staff follow, oh, can staff please follow up with this gentleman to give him an idea about what our response is to the homelessness issues? Thank you.
And specifically, Chief?
Would it be appropriate for the chief to give a brief overview of what you shared with council regarding the group of homeless individuals moving into the city?
Yeah, so just recently, excuse me, Caltrans came through and cleaned up everything from Lone Tree Way to Laurel, so behind Target, that entire strip. So, once they come in and do a cleanup, a lot of them will move to where they are on Jeffrey Way right now, and then after a period of cooling off, they end up moving back across the street. So, it's kind of a temporary move, so to speak. We have been in contact with the individuals that are at that location. We've offered all of them resources. Again, not everyone wants resources, but we do offer them resources through the core team, and we continue to make contact with them as often as we can until it becomes a point where we will have to take enforcement action if they're blocking sidewalks or the encampment just becomes too large. But I will follow up with you, sir, if you left your contact information. I'll, okay, I'll get with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Arastrella, followed by Karina, followed by Mike M.
Okay, I'm gonna be really bad at this again, but I'm gonna try my best, so bear with me. I'm here to talk about the amendment of tattoo shops being banned downtown. So, I would like to just read a couple of things here. I would like to point out that the city of Brentwood already allows a form of tattooing in the downtown-specific plan. It is listed as permanent cosmetics, which is also known as cosmetic tattooing. Sorry. I co-own a local tattoo studio with my husband that has been in Brentwood for 15 years. We have four artists who offer a traditional form of tattooing. I offer permanent cosmetics. The licensing that I am required to obtain through Contra Costa County is the same exact license as a tattoo artist is required to obtain, which is a body art practitioner license. There is only one application available because they're both a form of tattooing that is recognized as such by the county and the state. Sorry. The California Safe Body Art Act puts standards into place for businesses offering tattoos, piercings, and permanent cosmetics. As someone who offers piercings and permanent cosmetics, I am also required to register my facility with Contra Costa County as a body arts facility, which is also my facility with Contra Costa County as a body arts facility, which is also the same exact registration as a traditional tattoo artist would need to obtain for their facility. The tools and application process that I use during permanent cosmetic appointments are also exactly the same as the tools and applications traditional tattoo artists use to apply their technique. We both use a tattoo machine, tattoo needle cartridges, tattoo ink, and are both implanting ink into the skin of our clients. The city of Brentwood states that the definition of tattoo parlor means "any establishment that places an indelible mark or figure upon the body by insertion of pigment on or under the skin, or by the production of scars." That defines not just traditional tattoo parlors, but also permanent cosmetic facilities. At what point is one form of tattooing considered acceptable for the downtown-specific plan, but the other is disregarded and prohibited? I would also like to add, we started a petition and have gotten almost 600 signatures in support of amending the ban on tattoo shops in downtown, and it continues to grow daily. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Okay. Hello, Mayor Meyer, city staff, and city council members. This is Karina Helvey, once again, on behalf of the Brentwood Youth Commission. I just thought that I should take a moment to share some of our recent progress and upcoming plans. To begin, I'm so thrilled to announce that we have nominated Happy Lemon as our youth-friendly Business of the Month. This nomination was made in recognition of their consistent effort to provide a welcoming, inclusive environment where young people can gather, connect, and enjoy themselves. By creating a positive, youth-friendly space, Happy Lemon has demonstrated the kind of community-minded spirit that we hope to continue to encourage throughout our city. And additionally, I'd like to mention that we've officially sent out our formal invitation to the multicultural fair, where we're working diligently to ensure that the fair is an engaging experience for everybody involved, highlighting performances, exhibits, and activities from the variety of cultures represented within our community. We kindly ask that you keep an eye out for our invitation, because I'm pretty sure that it's been emailed, and because your participation and support would mean so much to us, and we'd absolutely adore to see you all there. Lastly, I wanted to share that we're tentatively planning our middle school pool party for May 30th, I'm pretty sure. While we're still in the planning stages, we're so enthusiastic about creating an exciting and inclusive event where middle school students can come together, they're going to enjoy themselves, and they're going to feel connected to their community. So like always, we appreciate your continued support of the Youth Commission's efforts, and we're so eager to keep working to make our projects a success. Thank you so much.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name's Mike Biakvich. I'm the junior vice commander of VFW Post 10789. I'm not a lawyer, but let me break this down in plain English. The county is playing fast and loose with the law when it comes to the Brentwood Veterans' Memorial Property. And we are here to make sure that they do not get away with it. The land was bought with a special tax back in 1923, specifically for veterans meeting places and memorials, not fire stations, not for government use, and certainly not for some politician's pet project. The law is clear. The Tax and Revenue Code says, "When public funds are raised for a specific purpose, they have to be used for that purpose." The county cannot just take land bought with veterans' tax and held it over for something else without the property being compensated or the fund being compensated. Though, the Military Veterans Code 1266 says, "Once the land is dedicated to veterans, it has to stay that way until two things can be done," neither of which have been not, either replaced with another facility equal, or unless the veterans give it up. And it is not just our opinion, there are case law backing us up. Glen County Veterans Council versus County of Glen, veterans fought back when the county tried to limit their use of the Moharal Halls, and the courts agreed with the veterans having the legal right to use these spaces. Two, Veterans of Foreign Wars versus State of California. The state tried to repurpose veterans' land, and the court says, "No, you can't do that." Three, VFW Post 10965 versus the City of El Paso de Robes, another case where the city tried to take the veterans' property for something else, and the court ruled in favor of the veterans. Four, Power versus McDonne, reinforced the veterans' rights to benefits must be upheld, especially when it comes to dedicating spaces. Five, Charles V. versus Gridley Camp Number 104. One of these earliest cases shown that the public funds are used for veterans' facilities, and government cannot just decide to do else with them. So let's be real, the county knows that they are in the wrong. That's why they keep twisting words and ignoring the law. They are hoping nobody challenges them, but we are. And we are asking you, the city leaders, to stand with us. This is about respecting the law, honoring veterans, and stopping the county from pulling a fast one.
The speaker's timer has expired. The next speakers are Dolores, followed by Michael C., followed by Travis.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, chief, and staff. I want to take a moment to remind everyone here that fire protection in East County has been a longstanding struggle. For decades, we've seen budget issues, station closures, staffing shortages. We all agree that we need strong fire and emergency services in Brentwood and throughout East County. But what's happening here is not the right way to solve the problem. Planning ahead and securing the right location for a fire station is a must. The fire station is now trying to take shortcuts by using land that was never meant for a fire station in the first place. The Brentwood Veterans Memorial Property, this is not just any lot. The lot was purchased with a special tax specifically for veterans, memorials, and meeting places. The county believes the empty space is available for whatever they want, and that's just not right for each and every one of us, because we all pay our taxes. The truth is, there are plenty of other suitable lots around the city for a fire station. Yes, it might take more time, and yes, it might cost more, but the solution to East County's fire protection challenges should not come at the expense of veterans. We really need to take from one group to support another, and we can find a solution that works for everyone just by working together. I urge you, as our Brentwood leaders, to stand up for what is right. Let's push for a fire station to be built where it belongs, on land properly designated for that purpose, not on veterans' land. It's time for East County to get the fire protection that we deserve without taking land that was set aside for those who served. Yes to the station, no to the location. Sand Creek Project and the SEQA that Commander Duran spoke on was well done by your staff. I took the time to read that, and I believe it was a 2005 SEQA. It was an excellent choice for a new station. It met all of the requirements and passed the SEQA requirements as well. We need to do what's best for Brentwood. I have one more thing I wanted to add on, not to do with the veterans, but last city council meeting, you had somebody speaking on goats. I want to tell you that I'm also a resident in Deer Ridge, and I absolutely loved the goats being there and taking care of the property there. And I walk it every day, and I'm seeing a huge difference. So I wanted to put a shout out for that. Thank you.
Tim, when is the fire station coming to planning? That's one of the top questions asked, and I think they should probably know.
I believe it's next Wednesday, March 18th, unless Eric knows Tuesday, March 18th. That's correct.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Michael Clement, 60-year resident of Brentwood. Supervisor Burgess has promised to rededicate the remaining portion of the veterans' property that was illicitly transferred to the fire district. Sounds like a noble plan, right? A kind of gesture that protects what little remains in the veterans' future. Well, we already have a dedication. That dedication was done back in 1922, when the county purchased the entire parcel, using the special tax specifically for veterans' memorials and meeting places, and yet today, that dedication is being completely ignored. So tell me, what's good is a new dedication for the Board of Supervisors now? If they are willing to disregard the original dedication, what assurances do we have that this new promise means anything? Words are cheap and actions matter. This isn't about honoring veterans, it's about erasing them. Supervisor Burgess also touts that she has $350,000 earmarked for the Veterans Hall. Is this hush money? An attempt to silence our veteran population? Let's be clear, this isn't some new generous gift. This is money already supposed to be used for the hall, and now suddenly, when they are trying to erase or force this fire station onto us veterans' land, they are offering some improvements. Now why is this dedication of neglect by the county? Or they suddenly interested in fixing the hall? The truth is, the hall should never, ever have been in such disrepair. If such fire districts have been paying the rent for the portion of the veterans' memorial property it was using, then perhaps we wouldn't need to have this deferred maintenance. Yes, you heard me correctly, the fire district has never paid for the property it's used, never paid for rent, never paid lease payments. The county allowed them to operate for decades without properly compensating the veterans' fund. And now, instead of correcting that injustice, they are now taking even more. So, we always say this, just because, you know, the veterans have been standing there for 100 years, and now after 100 years, this is what we've come to. It's fighting, it's bickering, it's not listening to us veterans, it's pointing the fingers. There's a lot of division going on in our communities, the community between just regular citizens that are not up to speed on what's going on, the veteran population that uses the hall, and people that just want to have a better protection in our city. And this is all caused by the county. This is embarrassing. We want the city to stand for the veterans and stick up for us.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. I stand before you tonight because this should have never been an issue in the first place. If this project had been done correctly, through the proper process, and placed in the best possible location, we wouldn't be here tonight. Supervisor Burgess has made the claim that a few self-serving individuals have delayed this project, but let's be honest, who's truly being self-serving here? The veterans? The community members? The small business owners raising concerns? No. No, it's the county and the fire district pushing forward without addressing the issues that we're bringing to the table. What is self-serving is ignoring history, dismissing legal restrictions, and pretending like the property was never purchased by a special tax. What is self-serving is misleading the public, ignoring alternative locations, and vilifying those who are simply trying to protect a sacred memorial. Veterans are not here because we oppose the fire station. We are here because the land is a memorial, a promise made to those who served, and a responsibility that we carry forward for future generations. We have the right, no, no, we have the duty to call our elected officials to account. We are here to remind you that this memorial is not a bargaining chip, not a loophole for poor planning, and not a monument to a career politician working their way into higher office. We are here to protect this memorial, not for ourselves, but for the generations of veterans who will come. That is the very definition of self-sacrifice, to do something for others without reward. Years from now, when the next generation of veterans asks, "What happened here?", what do we say? We will tell them, will we tell them that when the memorial was threatened, we stood aside and just let it happen? Or will we say that when it mattered most, we stood up and fought the good fight to the promise that was made to them? The county fire district has options. They don't need the veterans' land to build this fire station. Stop using the veterans' memorial property as your solution for failed fiscal governance. We demand the respect, and we demand accountability for the taxpayers. We are not just a few self-serving individuals. We are 40,000 veterans among 1.2 million residents, accounting for 412 households in Contra Costa County. We will not be over when the planning commission votes, and it will not be over when the city votes, so we ask you to stand with us.
The next speakers are Donald, followed by Melissa, followed by Christine.
Honorable council members, honorable mayor, thank you for hearing us this evening. I want to thank all of the council members for meeting with all of the veterans. We really appreciate, we know that we're heard, because you were able to listen to what we had to say. We very much appreciate that. And we want to also commend the building commission, because they all met with us as well, and so we feel heard, at least at the city level. Just a little bit of history, as some of you may know, the Veterans Hall is going to be 100 years old this year. The hall was finished being built in 1925, and so it's going to be 100 years old, and we hope that it will be here for another 100 years, serving this community. Fun fact, when the city was first formed, some of the first city offices were housed in the Brentwood Veterans Memorial Building. Another fun fact is when part of, in the 60s, the Brentwood High School, Liberty High School, had a portion of it burned down, classes met at the Brentwood Veterans Memorial Buildings. This building and the property it sits on has served the community for 100 years, and we appreciate being a part of the community and being able to support that. It was clear, based on recent newspaper articles, the county does not fully understand our position, based upon the information that was posted there. So we've sent a letter to Diane Burgess to make sure that it was crystal clear exactly what it is. We will pass that letter on to you, just so that you're aware, for your situational awareness. And as you've heard with many of our colleagues today, you can see this is much more targeted and much more specific, because we want to make sure that we got rid of all of the extraneous information and just focused on the main point, and so we appreciate that you do that. And we would like to thank you again for hearing us.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor, council members, city staff, and general public. I'm gonna try and get through this without crying, because it's a matter that has been near and dear to my heart, but I'm really tired of rhetoric, like saying things like, flying the pride flag threatens families. I am a mother. I belong to the church across the street. I was raised as a Christian. My Bible says I was fearfully and wonderfully made. Okay? I'm also a queer person. I am pansexual and non-binary. If anyone has questions about what that means, I'm happy to have a good faith conversation about it. Two of my children are queer. My oldest is trans and is facing dangerous times with our current administration. My middle child is also pansexual. Recent data from Gallup reveals that 9.3% of Americans identify as LGBTQ+, with the number rising significantly among younger generations. 23.1% of Gen Z and 14% of millennials also identify as LGBTQ+. These statistics underscore an important truth. Queer people are not a small fringe group, but a vital and growing part of our society. Yet despite the visibility, the LGBTQ+ community continues to face discrimination, systemic barriers, and alarming mental health challenges. According to the Trevor Project, LGBTQ+ youth are four times more likely to attempt suicide than their non-LGBTQ+ peers. Transgender and non-binary youth face even higher risks, with nearly 50% seriously considering suicide in the past year alone. These numbers are not just statistics. These numbers are not just statistics. They represent lives cut short due to rejection, stigma, and lack of support, oftentimes at the hands of their own family members. Studies consistently show that affirming environments, access to mental health care, and strong anti-discrimination protections drastically reduce these risks. Let me tell you a story about my friend Robbie. Because I know that there's a lot of people out there who think that being queer is a choice, that it's something that we wake up and just decide, hey, I like who I like, I love who I love. When I was in college the first time around, Robbie and I would participate in something called speak-outs. And he would always say, if he could take a pill to change the fact that he is gay, he would do it in a second. The fight for LGBTQ+ rights is not just about legal protections, it is about saving lives, it is about ensuring that LGBTQ+ individuals can live freely and safely without fear of discrimination, bullying, or violence. Every law, policy, and public statement that under-
The speaker's timer has expired.
Good evening. My name is Christine Hester. I've lived in the area since 1994, so Brentwood is near and dear to my heart. Downtown Brentwood offers a charming blend of small-town warmth and vibrancy. Its tree-lined streets, historic architecture, and locally-owned businesses create a welcoming atmosphere for reflecting the city's strong agricultural roots and strong sense of community. Visitors and residents alike enjoy the walkable downtown area featuring boutique shops and family-friendly restaurants, bars, and grills. And it has a classic charm to it. It embodies the heart and character of this growing, yet close-knit community. So downtown has its own special, living, breathing character and aesthetics. And now the county is trying to throw a big, huge, red brick building, changing the entire character of downtown Brentwood. Thank you.
I have no additional speaker cards.
Thank you. We will move into informational reports from council members, committees, liaisons, and staff. And we will start to my right with Councilmember Mendoza this time.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for coming out. I appreciate seeing all of you here. In these last couple weeks, I went to the grand opening of the Artisan Peacock at the Streets of Brentwood, attended the NAMI Contra Costa County Crab Feed, attended the Brentwood Union School District and Liberty Union School District Black History Oratorical, sorry about that, attended the Costco store opening, and I just want to say, it was amazing, anyone who went there, it was great. I heard they way exceeded their sales projections. And I just want to say a shout-out to Karen Rary. If you don't know, Karen Rary actually started this conversation with Terrence back in 2017. She really wanted a Costco, so she kind of kicked it off. So kudos to Karen Rary for always doing good things for the city of Brentwood. Attended a meeting where Senator Glazer spoke about local control, and again, he said, cities have probably some of the weakest lobbying power than any other organizations. We don't have money like private lobbyists do, we don't have anything like that. So it's always important that you reach out to your state legislators and tell them how you feel, to your county legislators, and to your council, because you are stronger than anyone with a lot of money when you get together. So, we had that. And then attended a mental health seminar last night with a lot of different organizations that do work around mental health care. I'm hoping that we can do another one. I want to do another one with, actually, that's really resident-focused. I saw a lot of organizations sharing great information with each other. But please keep an eye out for these, because you're all welcome to these. It's not just for people in that trade, it's welcome to anyone. So it was a great meeting. And also attend, watch the Art Commission inter, sorry, Park and Rec Commission interviews.
Good afternoon, everyone. So I've been a pretty busy young lady lately. One is I attended the grand opening of Artisan Peacock, which the store is beautiful, if you haven't been there, and bought little things for my children inside of the store. I attended the PAL Crab Feed. I don't eat crab, but I've been, this crab feed season, which was awesome, all the money that was raised, and to see all the officers out and exciting with their family. I attended the NAMI Contra Costa Crab Feed. I attended the Costco ribbon cutting, which was amazing, and actually ended up on Channel 2 News talking about our Costco and our city, so that was fun. I attended the swearing-in ceremony for Assemblymember Anna Marie Avila-Farias that happened in Martinez. After that, I went directly from there to the mayor's conference in Lafayette. I had a meeting yesterday with the Chamber of Commerce to count and review and certify the votes for their 2024 Celebrating Brentwood Gala for Citizen of the Year, Business of the Year, Nonprofit Employee Youth Startup Volunteer Candidates for their event that's slated to occur April 11, 2025. Went to a Rotary Meeting. I was also the keynote speaker at the Rotary of Oakley Girls Empowerment Event in Oakley, and it was amazing. There's like about 200-something young ladies in the room, was able to give out certificates from Assemblymember Avila-Farias and really speak. One of our officers was there, Officer Lafflin was there. She was amazing as always. And I also attended, I watched the assembly session of 3:10, where our Assemblymember Avila-Farias honored G.G. Crowder, Executive Director of NAMI Contra Costa, as the Woman of the Year during Women's Histories Month. And one of the things that brought tears to my eyes was attending the MLK Oratorical event put on by Brentwood Unified, specifically their parents, where I saw kids of all shapes, colors, sizes, religions come and do some great things. As a wrap-up for Black History Month, it was, those kids were so amazing and talented. And I think that is everything that I've done.
Thank you. Councilmember Olomons?
Since the last meeting, I attended the Tri-Delta Transit Meeting, the Police Activities League Board Meeting, which included our final board meeting for the Crab Feed for PAL. I had a meeting with the veterans regarding the fire station. Very enlightening conversation that lasted a little bit longer than I think they thought it was gonna, but it was okay. I was more than wrapped up in that conversation, so thank you for having it and taking the The, I attended the Habitat Conservancy Board Meeting. I attended the swearing-in of Assemblymember Avila-Farias in Martinez. The Chamber Ribbon Cutting for the 10-year anniversary of Little Owl Designs in the Streets of Brentwood. A Chamber Ribbon Cutting for the opening of Costco. As everyone has already mentioned, what a great event it was, and very well-attended. They, they started lining up just to see us at like 3:00 in the morning or something. It was, it was awesome. It was great. And then we had the Ad Hoc Finance Committee Meeting and the PAL Crab Feed. Thanks.
Councilmember Maloney?
Good evening, everyone. For the last two weeks, or since the last two weeks, I've met with Supervisor Burgess. I've attended the grand opening for the Artisan Peacock at the Streets of Brentwood. It's an awesome store. If you haven't visited, please go visit. I've also attended an Agriculture Committee Meeting. I've also attended the Liberty Union School District, Brentwood Union School District Black History Month Oratorical, it was great. I've attended the grand opening for Costco, right before I had to go to work, that was awesome. I attended also the Brentwood Police Department Neighborhood Watch Meeting, it was great. The Brentwood Police Activities League Crab Feed, it was delicious. We've also attended, a few of us, the Mental Wellness Workshop that was put on by the city of Brentwood, the Family Justice Center, NAMI, and the Crisis Center. It was great information. We're always working on breaking down that stigma, so please keep an eye out on any type of mental health workshops that we do bring on. Myself and Mayor Meyer also had our Parks and Rec interviews yesterday. And I also attended the California Elected Meeting where Senator Glazer was a speaker. Thank you.
Thank you. Since we met two weeks ago, I went to a State of the City Preparation Meeting for city staff. The reservations are open for that now. If you wanted to join us, it's going to be on March 31st at the Delta Theater. And I believe you can find information online, on our website, social media pages. Attended a Tri-Delta Transit Board Meeting, met with a representative of new state senator Chris Cabaldin. Attended the Choice in Aging Fundraising Event, nonprofit. The grand opening of Artisan Peacock at the Streets of Brentwood, where I spent way too much money. National Alliance of Mental Health, or excuse me, Mental Illness Fundraising Event. A joint meeting with County H3, which is Health, Housing, and Homeless Services, with Oakley Mayor Shannon Shaw, to get a better understanding of where we stand with our numbers and available resources in response, and talk about some regional planning. I have some information to share with staff, don't let me forget. The Ag Enterprise Committee Meeting. Also attended the Brentwood Union School District Black History Month Oratorical, and I would agree, it was so inspiring. And my favorite part of the night was that every time a new group or a new individual kid went up on the stage, the rest of the audience broke out in cheers and screams and claps. It was absolutely incredible to see. Had a meeting with the Downtown Business Coalition Board of Directors. Did some work on filming and voiceover recording for the State of the City. Again, look for that opportunity to RSVP. An interview with KRON Channel 4 the day before the Costco opening. The mayor's conference, there was a presentation by East Bay Regional Communication System Authority. Again, I have information to pass along to staff. The Costco ribbon cutting and additional television interviews, I think we all got a little space there. A podcast interview with the press, which will be published shortly on, it's a mayor's interview for all the East County cities. Heritage High School Annual Multicultural Rally. And this is basically the high school version of the BUSD one, and it was just as inspiring, and the talent was amazing. Community Day of Service Planning Meeting. Again, if you've got projects you want to submit, those are due by tomorrow, I believe. We're going to start opening up nonprofit registration. If you want a volunteer opportunity on April 12th, this, at Veterans Park, this is a great way to give back to your communities. I spoke at the Brentwood Greyhounds Youth Track and Field Event to welcome families from Brentwood and other five north-track team cities that was held at Liberty. Had a California Alliance of Local Elections Meeting with former Senator Steve Glazer. He spoke about local control and the regional housing needs assessment audit. Briefly attended the Mind Matters Strategies for Mental Wellness Event that Councilmember Maloney mentioned and put together with National Alliance of Mental Illness, Family Justice Center, Contra Costa Crisis Center in the city of Brentwood. And again, look for more opportunities with that. And finally, the Parks and Rec Commissioner Interviews. And that is all. And we're going to move into the consent calendar. We're going to poll proclamations for items E2, E3, and E5. Those will be presented after the vote on the consent calendar up at the dais. Do I have a motion on that?
I move to adopt consent calendar less items E2, E3, and E5. I'll second.
Through the mayor. We can include the proclamations in the vote, and then we can present them following.
What do you want me to do?
If you want, you can, if you, unless you were trying to pull additional items-
Oh, so then, yeah, then let's adopt the entire consent calendar. You still stand? I'll second. Yeah, I'll still stand. All in favor? Aye. Aye.
Sorry, I'm not on. We're going to start with E2, which is a proclamation recognizing March 2025 as Red Cross Month. And do we have-
I am so sorry, we're moving so quickly tonight. I do believe there is one ordinance title in that consent list that needs to be read for the record. I do apologize.
I'm sorry, too. Before we, before we do this, could we take a very short break? Thank you, it's been requested. Thanks. We can get started again as soon as council's back at the dais. Get it in the mic. Do not want to take this away from me. Thank you, everyone. We're going to reconvene, and we will go to Amanda to read the ordinance title.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Brentwood approving a zoning text amendment to Brentwood Municipal Code RZ 24-008 to amend the Brentwood Municipal Code relating to housing element implementation programs including H1L, farmworker and employee housing, H1P, replacement housing, H1R, parking standards for studios and one-bedroom units, H1S, CUP and Design Site Development Review Finding, H4H, Low Barrier Navigation Center, H4J, Single Room Occupancy SRO Units, H4K, Emergency Shelters, H4L, By Right Permanent Supportive Housing, AB 2162, H4M, Reasonable Accommodations, H4N, Definition of Family, and H4O, Residential Care Facilities in compliance with state law.
Thank you, Amanda. So we will move into the proclamations. And Linda Crippen with Red Cross, are you here? I'll meet you at the podium. We're moving into, ooh, that's always very hot. Moving into proclamations, and we're going to recognize American Red Cross Month. So whereas March is American Red Cross Month, when we recognize the compassion of people in Brentwood and renew our commitment to lend a helping hand to our neighbors in need. And whereas with 982 volunteers in Contra Costa County, the American Red Cross assisted or responded to 94 disasters, assisting 204 families, and through our Sound the Alarm Program, the American Red Cross installed 846 smoke alarms, making 262 homes safer, and trained 1,876 youth and adult through Pillowcase Project and preparedness programs. And whereas Contra Costa County residents donated 17,356 units of life-saving blood, hello, wow, hosted 520 blood drives, and trained 11,808 citizens in first aid, CPR, AED, and aquatics, and provided 463 case services to military members and their families, and provided humanitarian aid internationally. And whereas this work to uplift our community is made possible by those who selflessly answer the call to help whenever and wherever it is needed, we hereby recognize this month of March in honor of their remarkable service, and we ask everyone to join in their commitment to care for one another. Now therefore it be proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Brentwood hereby recognizes March 2025 as Red Cross Month, and the City of Brentwood encourages all residents to reach out and support its humanitarian mission dated this 11th day of March 2025. And again, we have Linda Crippen and?
The photographer.
The photographer, from American Red Cross to accept this proclamation. Linda, would you like to say a few words?
You said pretty much everything that I was going to say, giving the numbers. But one thing I'd like to say about Brentwood and the blood drive is that throughout the entire county, every city has their own blood drives. Brentwood was number two, only two, Pleasant Hill, who is the blood center where everybody goes. So, good job, Brentwood.
Out of 19 counties, we were number two.
Yes.
Great to hear. Excuse me, cities, sorry. So are we doing? Where's Derek? There he is. Next, we are moving into item E3, which is a proclamation recognizing March 18th, 2025, as National Agricultural Day. And we are going to present to Harvest Time. And I believe joining us will be Jessica Inos and members of the Harvest Time Board. You can come around if you want everyone to see you, too. That's, well, at least for the pictures. Whereas agriculture has been a cornerstone of Brentwood's heritage since the late 19th century, with the city historically renowned through the Bay Area for its cherries, corn, and peaches. And whereas Brentwood's commitment to agriculture remains steadfast, attracting over 150,000 visitors annually who engage in agri-tourism activities such as fruit picking, thereby bolstering the local economy. And whereas California leads the nation in agricultural production, with organic product sales increasing by 18.2% from 9.4 billion in 2018 to 11.1 billion in 2022, reflecting the state's dedication to sustainable farming practices. And whereas National Agriculture Day is an opportunity to recognize and celebrate the invaluable contributions of farmers, ranchers, and agricultural workers who ensure a safe and abundant food supply, steward our lands, and support our economy. And whereas the theme of National Agricultural Day 2025, Together We Grow, highlights the importance of collaboration among farmers, businesses, educators, and consumers to ensure a sustainable and thriving agricultural future. Now therefore it be proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Brentwood hereby recognizes March 18th, 2025, as National Agriculture Day. And the City of Brentwood encourages all residents to acknowledge and appreciate the vital role of agriculture in our community, and to participate in activities that honor our rich agricultural heritage, dated this 11th day of March 2025. Jessica, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much to, to City of Brentwood. We are so happy about this proclamation, and we are thrilled that we are the U-Pick capital, that we get to live here, and we get the privilege of participating in this amazing ag-community that we have here. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We're going to take a group photo. You can all stay down here if you want for the next one. Yeah. So don't put your things away. Last but very definitely not least, we are going to go to item E5, a proclamation recognizing March 29th, 2025, as National Vietnam War Veterans Day. They'll come for the picture. Whereas the Vietnam War was one of the longest conflicts in United States history, and nearly 3 million Americans bravely served in the US Armed Forces during this time, answering the call of duty with honor and courage. And whereas more than 58,000 American service members made the ultimate sacrifice, and countless others returned home forever changed, bearing the physical, emotional, and unseen wounds of war. And whereas March 29th has been designated as National Vietnam Veterans Memorial Day, marking the day in 1973 when the last combat troops were withdrawn from Vietnam, and serves as a time for our nation to express its enduring gratitude to all who served. Whereas the City of Brentwood is committed to ensuring that the sacrifices and contributions of Vietnam veterans are never forgotten, and this year's theme, honoring the legacy, remembering the sacrifice, celebrating the service, reflects our dedication to preserving their history and recognizing their lasting impact on our community and country. And whereas on this day, we stand united in paying tribute to the Vietnam veterans of Brentwood, the state of California, and across the nation, thanking them for their service and ensuring that future generations remember their courage, resilience, and dedication. Now therefore it be proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Brentwood hereby recognizes March 29th, 2025, as Vietnam Veterans Memorial Day, and encourages all residents to honor and express appreciation for our Vietnam veterans, their families, and all who have served our nation with valor, dated this 11th day of March 2025. Just going to invite you up. Is there one of you specifically that will be accepting this and speaking, or how do you want to do that?
No, you are.
On behalf of veterans of Vietnam, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I would like to say, as a Vietnam vet, this is the first time someone has actually congratulated me that was not a veteran. Veterans understand what we went through, and I just want to say thank you.
I too am humbled for this recognition after all these years.
Let's step away from the agenda order for just a moment, and Vice Mayor Pearson has an announcement.
All right, stop what you're doing, because I'm about to ruin the image and the style that you're used to. I look funny, but yo, I'm making money, see? So yo, world, I hope you ready for me. Now gather round. I want to announce the Juneteenth artist for 2025 on their 30th year of one of their album celebration is none other than, drum roll if you don't know by those lyrics, Digital Underground. Woo! All right, now it's public. Get ready to learn the hump-de-dance. It's your chance to do the hump.
One last thing really quickly. If you are a Vietnam veteran, can you please raise your hand? We're going to print recognition certificates for everyone here who is. Understood. It's beyond mine, too. Okay. Moving back into the agenda, was there anything left we needed to do with the consent calendar? We're done, right? Okay. Into business items, we have Erin Wandon, Parks Maintenance Manager, who will present the next item, item F1 regarding the Sand Creek Sports Complex Phase 1A project. Erin.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, that's a couple tough acts to follow. No, I cannot rhyme. And the veterans, I mean, the service alone, I mean, I feel, yeah, small, to say the least. So once again, good evening and thank you. We are extremely excited to be here tonight presenting this item, which is a project that has been around for 20-plus years, and I can honestly tell you, I don't have enough fingers or toes to count the number of individual staff members that have seen this project come and go. I will say there's a couple of us that have stuck around. a 10% contingency, which brings the total to just over $20 million for this contract. The contract was delivered to us on a, no, as you can see by the graph in front of you, we had nine companies bid on this project to the tune of, starting with 18.2 on up to 22.8. So let's obviously see it was an extremely competitive bid, roughly $4.5 million between the low bid and the high bid. So again, very competitive, but Bothman came in and all the paperwork's been completed again through Tammy and the contract's ready to be at least looked at tonight and hopefully approved. What does that 18 million get us? Well, just a brief history, this project started as a two-phase project, 14 acres on city property, roughly 19 acres on county property. Staff continues to work with the county for that Phase 2 of this project. However, when we started working with the engineer Verde Design, the estimates came in for a total build-out to the tune of $31 million. Obviously, we had to go back to the drawing board and through workshops and Park and Rec Commission, and obviously City Council at those workshops, broke it down to Phase 1A and Phase 1B for the city property. So knowing we're going to continue to work with the county on the county property, we focused on the 14 acres of city property. So therefore, we came up with Phase 1A and 1B. Phase 1A, which is included in this contract, includes the multi-use, three multi-use artificial turf athletic fields. They'll be lined for soccer and lacrosse initially, but can certainly be repainted and lined for additional sports. So any type of artificial turf playing field, we can restripe for. The bleachers with shade for viewing, obviously restroom slash staff building, we'll need the staff, recreation staff on the site to handle the programming. The group picnic area with an arbor for shade, and again, more shade. We understand the need for shade in Brentwood, so we're doing what we can in this project. The food truck area, highly popular area that's also going to have some shade in seating, which is adjacent to the group picnic area. The parking lot, which will be the first phase of parking lots. The second is an overflow parking, that's that area in white, just to the left of the asphalt parking. But there'll be the EV charging stations in the permanent parking lot. The traffic signal will be installed between Linden and Sand Creek or on Linden and Sand Creek right at that entrance, the main entrance to the park. There'll be also a right-in, right-out there at the end of that overflow parking area. But the traffic signal will be the primary inlet to the park. This team photo area, which is an artistic-type photo area that provides opportunity for teams to gather and get photos taken under a depiction of the City of Brentwood. Obviously, they'll be putting in the infrastructure for the future phases, so once we do have funding for Phase 1B, the infrastructure will be there and ready to go. Also included is the security and technology, which will also include Wi-Fi throughout the entire park, which is another demand for the residents, and we'll be able to accommodate that through the, along with the security, the technology that will go in at that. So also included in Phase 1A is four bid alternates. I'll get to those in a minute, but I did want to discuss that Phase 1B, which is that area in the yellow that's to the right of the fields, the large triangle that runs adjacent to the Sand Creek Trail. Past conceptuals included potential basketball court, pickleball courts, your typical hardcore-type sport events on some of the sport courts. There's the play structure along with another restroom or additional restroom building for the kids, as well as the BMX pump track and quite a few other options if available, but those are basically what came out of the original conceptual for Phase 1B. Obviously, as funding becomes available, we can start looking into what elements we can construct with that Phase B, or 1B. Having said that, I mentioned the four bid alternates. The first one being a turf maintenance contract, and that's actually, in addition to what parks staff maintenance will be able to perform, it's annual, annual GMAX inspections, which is like an impact test. So that makes sure that, like, would be a fall zone in a play structure, there's these GMAX testing, which again is impact attenuation for kids falling, or adults for that matter, on the grass. So it's just constant testing, I should say annual testing. It's annual maintenance for the first three years, and then twice a year during the last five years of the eight-year warranty. So it's pretty much covering the warranty entirely for that first eight years of the contract. It also involves or includes raking and replacing the infill, which is not rubber. This is going to be, I believe it's olive holes, which is a newer product, but takes the place of that rubber infill. But that's included in this contract is repairs and replace of the infill. And then it's also inspections of the glued and sewn seams that are in the turf. So it's full-on inspections and full-on repair and maintenance on any items for that first eight years. It's an extension of the warranty, basic, or extra addition to the warranty, I should say. So in addition to the maintenance contract, the picnic/warm-up area, which is another artificial turf area for just small, I won't say practices, but warm-up area before games, and additional planting throughout the park, as well as along Sand Creek Road and that parking lot. That was not included in the original bid, but is added as a bid alternate. And then of course, the park maintenance building, so addition to the restroom and recreation office area, this bid alternate includes the park maintenance building at the far end of the overflow parking lot. Storage, some truck, well, maybe not truck, but equipment storage, excuse me, equipment storage, any other items they might need onsite, but includes a fenced-off security area for that maintenance building. The slide in front of you now is depicting the 4.8 unfunded million dollars. Staff's recommending utilizing and again, working with finance and city management on some of these funding options, recommending the parks development impact fees to the tune of 2.5 million, the capital infrastructure fund for 2.3 million, and that would cover that 4.8 entirely. And complete Phase 1A, including bid alternates with this contract. Other possible sources that were looked at were the potential, that Windsor Way Homecoming lighting, basketball court lighting, that was roughly 700,000, general fund reserve for other future capital projects to the tune of 800,000. The parking garage, security and safety for 414,000, and then public art acquisition funds for 2.9 million. I just, having said that, I will add that next slide shows what that picture area is, and that is considered an art feature, which is included in the budget and the contract tonight. That's a roughly $68,000 price tag on that artwork, but we could certainly look into utilizing the art funds for that element because it is entitled, it is titled an art That's all I have in this brief presentation, myself and plenty of staffs here, including recreation staff, for any questions.
Thank you, Erin. That was a fantastic presentation, and we're going to move into clarifying questions from council members.
Yeah, I have one question, but first of all, I want to say thank you so much because I've been out here over 20 years and I've been waiting for this for over, and my kids don't even play soccer, but I know our community has been asking for it for a long time. So thank you to all of you for all of the work that you've put into this. It's, as a resident, I'm so excited, not even as a councilperson, so thank you. But my question is, how much is in the art fund right now? What's the total?
I will defer that question to Finance Director Carrie Brain.
There's currently 2.9 million in the art fund. There's another 700,000 or so in the art administration fund, so there's an art acquisition fund, 2.9 million, and an art administration fund of about 700,000.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you again.
Any other clarifying questions?
I do, I have a couple, and I know the answers to these, but this is a pretty hefty contract, and I think the citizens deserve to kind of have an idea of how we came up with, which we didn't do, you guys did, came up with all of this money. So I think some of these questions might be for Carrie, but what, what one-time revenue source made up that $8 million, the bulk of that, run into that contract?
So the $8 million that's showing coming from general fund was originally sourced from the federal ARPA money that came out during the pandemic. So the city was allocated $6.9 million that came in that we wound up transferring into general fund, and then the general fund contributed the funds into this project. We also had 1.2 million, I believe it was from the sale of the tech center that became the orthopedics business.
Perfect, and we're just going to run down the whole list, so I'm just, is there the overall 10, 10.2 million coming from parks and trails? Where does that money come from? And where, how would we be replacing some of that?
So the 10.2 million, that's all development, so new development, when they come into the city, they have to pay into the parks impact fee in order to come here. And so this has been collected from new development as they've been coming into the city. The money's been set aside for this purpose, and so the funds are restricted towards some sort of park usage, and this is where the council decided to put it. And it'll be replenished through any future development as it comes in. Again, they will put money into the parks development impact fee fund.
Okay, and the last one's kind of self-explanatory, the savings on the bond refinancing, but the one before that, the capital infrastructure fund?
So capital infrastructure fund, we've set those funds aside with the thought towards economic development purposes to help economic development within the city. So it's not, it's not as restrictive as the parks funds, and this project certainly will increase economic development within the city. This is one-time money, so this, we don't have a funding source for new funds to come in on this. It would take council to set aside funds from various one-time things, if we're to sell city property or one-time events, that money can be allocated back into the capital infrastructure fund if the council wishes.
Perfect, thank you.
A question on the art fund, there was the beautiful photo op. Has the funding for that already been taken from the art fund? And if not, then what would be removed from that total cost at this point?
So no, it has not been removed from the art fund. We would actually have a choice of which source to take it back. We wouldn't want to take it from the parks development fee fund. I would suggest the capital infrastructure fund is probably the way to go on that, so that would be my recommendation.
And do we know what the amount would be or estimate?
Roughly $68,000.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions for staff?
I just had a clarifying question. In the agenda, it said the capital infrastructure balance would be negative, and I wanted to know if that was, if it was actually going to be a negative balance or were we using a carryover? Sorry, if we're just depleting what we actually have.
So that was in reference to the parks development impact fee fund. The capital infrastructure fund, we do have the money on hand. The parks development fee, we do not, and so money would be coming in from future development to raise it back up. Our five-year projections show it coming back within about three years. This is not unusual. We've done this before where, you know, typically you don't want to wait until all the money comes in from development or you're going to have no amenities within the city. So sometimes you'll front the money, build the facility for the residents, and then the money comes in from development later on. And so we'll internally arrange the financing and then get paid back when future development comes in, just a way of accelerating the process of building amenities.
And we'll only be paid back if we do the, in Lufy's?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
And then I have a couple more, sorry. One of them is there, the operations and maintenance annual estimation costs were roughly 128,000. Can you talk about what that, what goes into that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Was that that one slide?
Yeah, well, I don't, we did not have the 128 put on there. I think that's on the CIP sheet in the packet. That's a complete estimate based on landscape maintenance acreage that's at this park. This one happens to be a lot less than our typical, like Sunset Park, because we're not going to be mowing turf. So the maintenance amount is based on our standard LLC when we build parks, our budgets are based on $19,000 per acre. So obviously, this project is a little bit different than a typical park, so we had to increase that a little bit, but it still doesn't take into account programming, because when we came up with the 128 roughly for O&amp;M, that would, I had no idea what the facility was going to look like at that time, so it just kind of carried over throughout the project. We'll certainly tune it up, but once we know we have a project, we know what kind of program is going to be needed, whether that's soccer, lacrosse, and figure out what kind of cost recovery we can get, we can kind of fine-tune that cost a little bit better for this specific facility. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
It's more of a generic number that we start with and build off of.
Thank you. For those who are watching and who are new to this project, can you give a really brief overview of the community engagement portion of this project?
Community engagement, geez, it started with our master plan, our park recreation, Park Trails Recreation Master Plan update in 2019, where, well, I should go 20 years before that as well. So there's been numerous individuals involved with certain workshops and/or meetings, town halls and whatnot, but when we started getting serious, it involved, starting with that master plan, looking at what we really wanted to start with, which is the site in general, and then engaging through surveys, which was included in that master plan. So it was surveys throughout the city on numerous levels, as well as outreach to the residents for the master plan. Once we've really honed in on this project, it involved workshops through city council, there was maybe two different workshops, and then we also had one at the Park and Recreation Commission as well, before finally settling on the conceptual. So there was, yeah, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but at least three or four workshops that were directly associated with this project.
Thank you, Erin. My last question is whether there have been any discussions about sponsorships?
Not yet. We wanted to get a project approved and we can, boots will hit the ground tomorrow morning.
Great, thank you. No other questions? Okay, we can now open it up for public comments.
At this time, the public is permitted to address the City Council on this agenda item. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand to speak. If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the city clerk. We'll take public comments from those participating in the council chambers first, then from those participating via Zoom. Remarks will be limited to three minutes per person. I don't have any speaker cards in person. I do have hands raised in Zoom.
But when we started getting serious, it involved, starting with that master plan, looking at what we really wanted to start with, which is the site in general, and then engaging through surveys, which was included in that master plan. So it was surveys throughout the city on numerous levels, as well as outreach to the residents for the master plan. Once we've really honed in on this project, it involved workshops through city council. There was maybe two different workshops, and then we also had one at the Park and Recreation Commission as well, before finally settling on the conceptual. So there was, yeah, I, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but at least three or four workshops that were directly associated with this project.
Thank you, Aaron. And my last question is whether there have been any discussions about sponsorships?
Not yet, we wanted to get a project approved, and we can, Boots will hit the ground tomorrow morning.
Great, thank you. No other questions? Okay, we can now open it up for public comments.
At this time, the public is permitted to address the city council on this agenda item. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand to speak. If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the city clerk. We'll take public comments from those participating in the council chambers first, then from those participating via Zoom. Remarks will be limited to three minutes per person. I don't have any speaker cards in person. I do have hands raised in Zoom. First speaker is Marisol.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to thank the city, thank the city council staff, everybody for, I'm so excited about this. I was, my, I've been here for 20 years. My children have been in all the sports that could possibly be here in Brentwood, and I was a part of impact, I was part of putting revolution, merging, and seeing the impact of what soccer is, and seeing this come to life, and seeing that this is on the agenda today to award a contract to get this field started. I just want to say a big thank you. Thank you so much for giving this back to our community, to our youth. Having Sunset is such a joy, and now having another field. I know my children won't be able to, be able to use it any longer, but I know just from the experience that I've had at Sunset, Oak Meadow, Balfour Guthrie, all the other parks in the city, that this is going to be such an amazing addition. And so thank you, and I hope that you award this contract tonight and move it forward to honor all of the work that we've done in the last 20 years to make this come to this point. So thank you to city staff and to council.
Next speaker is Mike. Mike, go ahead.
Hi, thank you, yes. I couldn't be there in person tonight. Normally, I like to come to meetings or I'll watch virtually, but I am literally watching this meeting and the CONCACAF Champions Cup between Tigris and Cincinnati. I am, I felt compelled to chime in. I'm excited we're hitting this milestone finally with the Sand Creek Soccer Complex and getting one step closer to breaking ground, which hopefully coincides with the World Cup coming to the Bay Area next summer. I think we need to, I think we need to make note that we don't want to undersell the, the economic and financial impact that this project can have on the city and the surrounding area of East County. It's not that far-fetched of an idea that one day Brentwood here could host a USL League One or League Two professional women's or men's soccer team, similar to the Oakland Roots or Oakland Soul, or even San Jose Earthquakes Town FC, which currently plays at St. Mary's College. Like, that won't be able to hold a candle to our soccer complex here. I just think sky's the limit. You know, my kids never played soccer, but I know a ton to do here, and I'm enthused that we're going to bring a world-class facility to Brentwood that will be available to girls and boys of all ages, all socioeconomic backgrounds throughout East County. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention previous council member and Vice Mayor Karen Rary, who, this was her brainchild, and she efforted for this, you know, over 20 years ago. So I want to thank her. But most importantly, I think we need to send Council Member Mendoza her flowers. She's the one that basically did resurrect this project, created a new vision and strategy for it. And not surprisingly, as she always does, included the residents of Brentwood in the decision-making. Holding multiple workshops was her idea, encouraged the public to participate in this project, and I want to thank her directly. And I don't know, I don't know who takes the ceremonial first kick when this actually gets done, the first penalty kick. I know Assistant City Manager Darren Gale, Phil, fancies himself a soccer player and has a wicked right foot. I would love to see him either put one in the back of the net or sky one completely over the crossbar when we finally get this done. But thank you, staff, thank you for everyone that put in all the hard work, and really looking forward to it. Let's go Brentwood.
Next speaker is Bobby. Bobby, go ahead.
Good evening, we, good evening, council. Appreciate the time today. On behalf of East County Revolution FC here in Brentwood, definitely want to say our thank yous for the time, effort, energy over the decades of time to bring these particular fields to a reality. We're definitely excited to be a club that's going to be able to benefit from these for the over 2,000 players that we represent, both on the rec and the comp side of the table. We also do, do host a UPSL semi-pro men's team. So to Mike Kay just a moment ago, there's definitely some of that available out in the community that will benefit from it, and only growing with hopefully adding a women's league here in the near future. Again, just thank you for that. Would love some color in the future of how we can definitely partner with the city to be part of this particular process. I know there's some cost involved, and definitely looking to come into the table with what we can do as, as partners to the community. Again, thank you for your time, appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. Thanks.
I have no additional hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you, Amanda, and I would like to personally nominate Darren for that first kick. Certainly not going to be me, I'd fall on my face. Council discussion, who would like to speak, Vice Mayor?
I'll piggyback on there, I would like to provide Darren with the knee-high socks to wear for that kick. That being said, thank you, thank you, thank you to Parks and Rec staff. When I initially came onto council, this was one of the first things that came before me on council was the Brentwood, the Sand Creek Sports Complex. And I got to go to one of those meetings, and it was amazing to see the entire community center space filled with people of all ages. And to really, what I really appreciated was that Parks and Rec staff involved our youth, and they got to talk about what things they wanted. I want to thank you, Darren, for really driving conversations at the table with the, with the kids and kind of shutting us old people up and saying, listen to what they have to say, because they really drove the conversation. And I think at the time, all council was present in the room to pay attention and be a part of that. But I definitely, I'm grateful. Thank you, Aaron, for recognizing, for being a part of everything. And thank you for recognizing Tammy, never got to see you or meet you, but I want to say personal thank you. It's so nice when you all come down, because we finally get to meet you and see you. So thank you from the dais for all your hard work. The only additional item that I would say is I'd like to accept the recommendation, but I'd like to add to it that we take 68K from the art funds with the not-to-exceed amount of 75,000. We've seen that these art installations can sometimes come a little bit over, so I'd like to add in a do-not-exceed amount to it, if possible.
And would you like that to replace the recommended funding source that's previously there then? The capital projects fund?
I think, how much of the capital project fund was, was that amount? I think it's coming up on, yeah, from the, it was, I think he said the capital infrastructure fund. So it was at 2.3 million, so if we can take that little bit out of there. Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah, that was my husband, and he knows how passionate I was about this project for so, so long. And thank you, staff, for putting up with me during the original conversations when we got the money. And I know I was kind of a hard, you-know-what about where I wanted the money to go, but I was very adamant about not splitting up the money into different buckets and really doing one great thing for our city that would, like, would be a legacy for all of you also that have done so much, so that every time you see that, you know that that was your work, right? So I, I appreciate all of you and putting up with me during this. And I'm excited for the community more than you all know. Again, it's, I'm a big proponent of parks and having spaces for our kids to be able to do something, right? Like, we complain, like, oh, they're hanging out the parking lot, or they're doing this, and they're doing that. And all I hear from kids is like, we want more space to play, we want basketball courts, we want this, we want that. So when you can deliver to these kids who can't even vote yet some really good stuff, it's just, it's amazing. Okay, so that's that. When we talk about the money, you all need some direction on where you want the money to come from, is kind of where you're going with this too, right? So I think, you know, future borrowing from the park is the 2, 2.5 million. And I'm sorry, the slides aren't up anymore, so I can't see it. But I think we were talking about that, I think that that's, and we do, you do play around with the money, because you know you have development coming, so I think that that's a good way to go about it. And then if, we've had a lot of discussions about the art fund and what we can and can't use it for, and what are we liable for. So I think, you know, more money from that art fund to get to the gap that we have would be a really good way to go about it, because we need 4.8. So the 2.3 plus the balance coming from the art fund, I mean, from the public art acquisition fund would be a good idea. I think we still have to finish conversations on the garage if we were to do anything there. And, yeah, that's, and the basketball court lighting, that's one of the top asks I get, so I kind of don't want to pull that away, but we can have those conversations.
Councilmember Maloney?
I'd like to say thank you to all staff and council and previous council for all your hard work on this project. I can't wait to see what it's going to bring for the city of Brentwood and its community. If we do pull the money from the Arts Commission, if we can at least pick an artist that's local, not like in another state as well, so we don't have the same challenges. That's all for me, and thank you, everyone.
And I'm going to jump right on that, that train and thank staff for all the hard work they did. I know I attended all of those meetings, I watched you guys put them together, trying to scramble around the rooms and make sure the, all the audio was working and make sure the cameras were working. Tammy, where are you? I, I haven't even seen you before or heard your name mentioned, but apparently you're the reason we're sitting here tonight. Thank you so much for all the hard work you did, and Vassal. And as a true leader, she casts that out to the rest of the staff, so it, it just proves the point. Thank you very much. The funding for the project, the, talking about the money, the 2.3 you're talking about is from the capital infrastructure fund?
I was saying 2.5 from Parks Development Impact Fees. I mean, unless you guys feel different. And then the balance coming from the 2.9 at the bottom, the public art, because we can, or how much can we take from the public art? We can't take all of it, can we?
We can't take it all.
How much can we take, max?
So?
Oh, only 75, sorry.
Sorry, boo.
Sorry, okay, then capital infrastructure and 75 from public art.
Okay. That, I just wanted to make it clear where the money was coming from and how much was coming from each of those funds. So if we were to fund it, 2.3 from the, or I'm sorry, the 2.5 from Parks and Trails, the 2.3 minus the 75,000, and the rest from the capital infrastructure fund? Yes? Okay.
Unless someone feels differently, and they want to pull it from like 400,000 from the parking garage or the general fund reserve for future capital, the 800. I don't know how anyone feels about that.
I'd like to have a little discussion about the parking garage security and safety enhancements. We had a lot of discussion initially about those safety enhancements and what was needed, and we had meetings with the school, the police department, and went through a lot of back and forth trying to figure out the best way to make positive impact there. And there have been a lot of already improvements to the parking garage. And I was hoping that, that we could get a little bit of overview about what has been invested so far and what safety enhancements have taken place, because if we're talking about potentially taking from that, there are a lot of different components to the project. So I'm trying to figure out where we could pull from that wouldn't necessarily impact the safety that, you know, I haven't heard from teachers in a long time about this. So just one little bit of background, it looks like the chief's ready to say something.
So from the police department's perspective, one of the biggest changes is we have a new SRO at Liberty, and he's very engaged with the kids and understands the white elephant that they all want to flock to. So he's there on a regular basis, encouraging them to move along and not hang out down there. Again, we're at the mercy of humans, so we could do something tonight, tomorrow, something could happen that would need and arise, or cause a need for more funding. So from our perspective, the enforcement, the continued self-generated calls that are coming in through the computer system for extra patrol, and then the use of the SROs and the school security officers doing their periodic patrols through there and city park to help corral the kids back to where they need to be.
Thank you, chief. And haven't there also been a significant installation of cameras at different areas of the garage that didn't used to be there?
Not that I'm aware of. The cameras that are there are there. Dispatch does monitor them, and they will self-dispatch somebody to something before we get a phone call related to kids in the parking structure during school hours.
Yeah, I remember there was something that was different about that though, because the note, even the notification, I remember Damian was talking about it too, that police, the PD was finding out earlier, or more information, or better visibility, or something that was done to the garage that was helping with that portion of it, and the response.
So the cameras were upgraded in the parking garage, which provides much clearer optics for, all these cameras are on at the police department. And so those were updated over the last, it's been in the last 24 months that those cameras were updated.
Yes, and if, as you've toured the dispatch center, the big wall of monitors has the entry-exit for the parking garage, and then all the monitors that surround the room have different aspects of the parking garage and city hall complex up 24 hours a day.
Thank you. And then were there, was there some sort of, not a, not a traffic calming, but like a bump? Some sort of something to discourage?
Yeah, the Public Works installed dots for.
I don't remember what those things are called.
Yeah, bots dots to help prevent them from drifting around the curves as they come down the hill.
Has that helped?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so there have been some improvements that, that were invested in. Do we have any idea about what, what we're talking about funding-wise, what we've invested so far?
I don't think it's, but besides staff time, no other physical resources, aside from, I believe, cleanings that have happened in our, prior to this, but are ongoing. So from a, other than staffing costs, there has not been any other hard costs that I'm aware of.
Okay, because I know the budget for this was originally higher than 414. Could we get that slide back up?
If I could chime in, Mayor?
Please do.
The city did hire a design consultant, and that, that contract is, has used up approximately about 30,000. So that has been put towards the current designs. So as for the extra 4, 6,000, not sure where that came from, but.
So do we have, does staff have any kind of recommendation about what would be appropriate to prioritize for parking garage improvements?
I'm an advocate for the counter, and the, the design as it is, stands now to prevent access after hours. Because once that arm goes down and the garage is closed, dispatch, if they see people in there, we can, an officer can go in, clear them out, and then for all intents and purposes, they don't have to go back there again over and over in the middle of the night on proactive patrols. It'll help deny the access.
And would that require the entire investment of 414,000?
I don't know, because we didn't get many bids back when it went out to bid. So not sure what that would cost, but in addition to, just from the, you have, okay. In addition to the, just the safety measures from issues like at the Fourth of July, the 75th celebration, the parking garage is full, and getting to the top, there's not a big turnaround area up there, and having everybody backed up creates a huge safety problem, from, from my perspective.
Just to add on with regards to the fact that we went out to, to bid with and received no bids, we had a rough estimate, engineer's estimate of two, up to $200,000 for the alligator teeth, the garage arm, parking arm, and the counters and the display. So that's what we estimated. It is a little bit outside of our normal estimating procedures, so it's, we really don't know. The plan was with the receipt of no bids, that we could reach out to some of the plan holders and see if there's an opportunity to have some negotiations and come back to city council with an updated estimate and potentially a contract that, that council could consider in a future date.
Thank you, and I realize I'm asking all of this without any notice, so I appreciate that you've been able to pull some things together to answer. Anything else, Tim, that you think we should mention at this point?
Just to make mention that with the 4.8 million that's unfunded, if you'd use the Park Development Impact Fee of 2.5, the 2.275 of the capital infrastructure, and 75,000 from the public art fund, you'll have what you need to approve the contract. And since it's a two-year potential construction window, there's always the potential to replace those funds throughout the process as you pay off the contract, but at least that would give us a starting place. And then the parking garage, I would also lend support that there's still going to be some added value if we get the gate in and we get the counter, that's going to improve. That's going to improve the use and the safety of that parking garage. So we'd still like to keep that on the table to talk through at some at the Capital Improvement Project Workshop or the Budget ad hoc as well.
Thank you for that. So if we were to maintain the budget at 414,000 for the garage improvements, and it didn't come to that, if we if we were able to do that for a little bit less based on the negotiations, we could then replace some of the capital and capital infrastructure fund?
Yeah, with those first two funding sources on the on the on the slide there, you'll fund everything. But if you're going to use 75,000 from the public art, then you're still funded. You don't have to touch those other three bullet points at all.
Right. But I mean, if it goes under budget, would we be able to put some of that money back into that?
Yes. Sorry. Yes.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
We can also use this money for other items that we need to talk about on the agenda later on tonight. Correct? Yes, thank you.
Any other discussion, or do we have a motion?
I have a motion. As detailed in the staff report, I move to adopt a resolution approving the contract documents, awarding the bid, and authorizing the city manager to execute a contract necessary and necessary documents for this Sand Creek Sports Complex Phase One, a project to the Robert A. Botman, Inc. And I would say with the friendly amendment or with the addition of us using the funding sources as recommended, reducing the capital infrastructure fund to 2.278 million, 454 dollars, and we add in the $68,000 from the public art fund, probably our acquisition funds with a not to exceed amount of $75,000.
And I will happily second that.
And do we have any clarification before that is voted on? We're all good? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And no opposition, the motion passes.
Thank you, staff.
Yes, part two. Erin Wandon, Parks Maintenance Manager, will present the next item regarding an agreement with PG&E for the Sand Creek Sports Complex project. Thank you, Erin.
Good evening, and thank you once again. I'll be short and sweet on this one. This one typically would have been a consent item, but since the Sand Creek Sports Complex hadn't been approved yet, we couldn't get the cart before the horse here. So this is getting us in PG&E's queue as early as possible, and this is absolutely as early as possible, and making sure we're in communication with PG&E to make sure there is electric at this site, the Sand Creek Sports Complex.
Thank you. Any clarifying questions? Okay, thanks, Erin. We will now open up public comments.
At this time, the public is permitted to address the City Council on this agenda item. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand to speak. If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the city clerk. We'll take public comments from those participating in the council chamber first, then from those participating via Zoom. I forgot what agenda item we're on now.
F2.
Two. I have no speaker cards in person. And no hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you. And any council discussion on this item? Okay, we can move into a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Are you sure? Okay. As detailed in the staff report, I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with PG&E.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And opposition is no opposition, it moves forward. Okay. Yes, again, thank you, staff, so much. Erin, great job in the presentations. Okay. Item F3, Alan Bacalar, Director of Engineering, will provide an update on the Vineyards at Marsh Creek Event Center slash Amphitheater project. Thank you, Alan.
It is, it's on the the L drive under Engineering Vineyards, and then there's a version three of the presentation.
So for those watching, just be patient, please, as we're queuing up the slideshow. Thank you.
Thank you, Darren, and thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council. I am presenting an update on the Vineyards at Marsh Creek Event Center and Amphitheater. Next slide. So as a quick overview, this is the project location within the Vineyards at Marsh Creek subdivision, and it currently located off of Vineyards Parkway to the south of Reserve Court. So a little bit of background, here's the project timeline. Back in 2004, the original project was evaluated and included as part of the Vineyards at Marsh Creek Development. Later, five years later, in 2009, and a feasibility study was performed for the event center. Three years later, the city, this project became a city project with funding provided through the developer as far as development impact fees as well through a development agreement. Seven years later, in 2019, an amphitheater feasibility study was performed. In 2021, the city hired an architect and environmental consultant to begin designs on the design build contract, as well as the subsequent EIR Environmental Review. It was during this time, once the project was fully fleshed out, stakeholder meetings were held, and a design and concept concept was was settled, and estimates were provided that we realized that the budget was insufficient, considering back in 2012, the that was when the funding was originally provided. In 2024, staff presented an update to City Council where we received direction to consider a phase revised Phase One, which would be essentially an event lawn. Next slide. Let's see. So here's an overview of the overall project. In brown, you'll see you'll see the parking lot, which was originally set as a 250-vehicle parking lot. Below on below that in green is the amphitheater site locate, you know, as you can see, people would come to the parking lot, they would walk down to the amphitheater. The yellow area indicates a promenade and box office area where ticket sales would happen. And then in purple, there is the event center location. So here, highlighted in orange, is the area that we've been focused on focusing on for the new Phase One, the event lawn. We have been directed to use up to 9.4 million dollars of the budget. However, I'll kind of go into a little bit more detail as to what we can do within this orange area. And then Phase Two below the amphitheater, I'm kind of noting here that it would take an additional 5.7 million dollars to construct that. And that's what that would be above the 9.4. And then the event center would be an additional 5.5 million dollars. So here's a quick overview of the event lawn area. Currently, a few statistics, it features 81 parking stalls, an outdoor shade canopy, restrooms, a food truck staging area, an event lawn, which is about approximately 40,000 square feet in size, and a covered stage. Next slide. Here is a somewhat 3D rendering of the event lawn area. So in green, it's clearly noted, the event lawn. Highlighted in yellow there is showing the potential food truck area and staging. Also pointed out is the shade canopy, the restrooms, and the covered stage. Here's another view of the area, again, with the various features and amenities pointed out. And finally, here's a view from the shaded canopy, kind of showing you the extent of the initial designs and concepts we're looking at. It kind of and pointed out there is a view towards the covered stage area. Real quick recap on the project funding. Currently, as I mentioned, we have a total budget of 9.4 million dollars. Approximately $700,000 worth has been encumbered or allotted towards the design and environmental review and and other studies that have been done up to this point. Also indicated on the slide is the estimated maintenance costs for the event lawn at the different phases. So for Phase One, we're estimating $70,000 a year towards maintenance. For Phase Two, the amphitheater, that would bump up to $300,000. And then for Phase Three, the event center, we were looking at a total of $400,000 of annual maintenance for the entire project. So this evening, we're looking to, we wanted to share this update with City Council, give you a view of kind of the the direction that we're headed. The if you notice with the design, we're really sticking to the original layout of the project. We don't want to build anything with Phase One that would later have to be torn down or removed or majorly modified to accommodate the future amphitheater build out as well as the event center. So it's kind of lining up with the original concepts. So that was the direction that we're headed here. So the council direction that we're looking for today is, you know, we're looking at possibly three scenarios. One is that we receive direction to continue with Phase One of the project. Staff would return with a report, additional renderings, including an itemized list of amenities, options, and associated costs for the event lawn. The hope is to bring that back to City Council this spring. With that feedback, we could then finish up the contract documents for the design build contract and go out to bid this summer, potentially, as soon as the summer, to then finalize the design and construction contract. Number, the second option would be to forego Phase One and preserve and explore options to add funding for Phase Two. So that's also an option. And third is to receive any other option that City Mayor Council may provide. With that, that concludes my staff report, and I'm open for I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Alan. Any clarifying questions? Okay, we will move into public comment.
At this time, the public is permitted to address the City Council on this agenda item. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand to speak. If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the city clerk. We'll take public comments from those participating in the council chamber first, then from those participating via Zoom. I do not have any speaker cards on this item, nor do I have hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you. Closing public comments, we will move into council discussion. Who wants to go first? Councilmember Mendoza?
I'm excited about this project. Again, I told you all, I love parks, I love open space. I am excited about it. I think the funding is the biggest question. We've talked about the art fund. I want to use the art fund, and I want to use the art fund by getting an artist to design the stage, just like we're doing over where they're taking pictures over for the soccer area, because it's artistic. I think we get a beautiful stage, and it could be designed by an artist and then executed. And I think we can use those funds in that same fashion. So then we go from being 15.1 million, and the other thing is, I'm looking at Phase Two, not I mean, option two, not option one. Because then that's 15.1 million, we deduct 9.4 million, we have 5.7. Then we deduct the art, which is 2.9, when we're down to 2.8. Then I also suggest that we talked about the $800,000 that we had available in the other project. We take that down, so we go from 2.8 to 2 million, and then we have 2 million, we can talk about what do we cut something, or do we go through our CIPs that are already funded and figure out what is a nice to have, what is a must have? And maybe when we're reviewing CIP projects, we can also come up with some, because there's some that I I've talked about before I don't think we need, such as the general plan update. I think there's other CIP projects that we can look at, and not necessarily that one, that's just an idea. Again, of what's nice to have and what's must have. But I think that we need to, you know, just, I don't want to go in, like, I think the good thing about the sports complex is it's very clean phases. We're not going to have to undo anything and spend more money to undo it. So this one, I'd like, you know, I I don't like the idea of having to undo anything because the first phase kind of doesn't fit in. But those are my suggestions. Again, I, you know, if you look at the surveys that were done, people want events. That is what people want in Brentwood. They want events, they want things to do. I think that we've talked about it before with the food trucks up there, with the stage, that would be fantastic. We talked about having a farmer's market up there, too, which I think would be great use of that space. When we talk about pavilions, I'll tell you that there's a shopping center in town that's going to put in their own pavilion because they use the one they have at their other properties so much. People want entertainment, they want things to do. And again, this is not going to be like people call like live, and I think Carol Leon one time was like, oh, Live Nation. This is not Live Nation. This is our community amphitheater. I mean, maybe we'll have Digital Underground there one day, but it's not like Live Nation like. So those are my thoughts. I don't know how you all feel about it, but that's just out of the chute, how I feel.
Thank you. So taking into consideration the guidelines that allow for the art fund to be used and what it can't be used for, it'd be a little uneasy taking the whole fund and using it for this project. As far as the Phase One of this project, which we had already talked about at one point, moving forward with that, did you mention that we wouldn't have to undo any of the work we've already done?
That's correct. The way we're working with is to make sure that it's whatever is installed now would not have to be removed at a later point with when we do move forward with face future phases. Yes.
So if if we started at Phase One and we constructed all of Phase One, but right towards the end of it, we ended up with funding for maybe Phase Two, it wouldn't, we would just be adding the the cost of fund, too, not to rip out part of Phase One and then reconstruct Phase Two. So it wouldn't add any to that original bit or estimate, sorry.
There may be a little bit, just with some utilities, but we'll plan ahead as much as we can. That will be that will come with the menu list of items that we had planned. We just want to make sure we quantify everything, and the architect has a chance to quantify it. But for the most part, majority of the work would not be have to be removed. It might be just some minor redo of some pavement, to redo some utility connections, but nothing, nothing major.
Okay. And my understanding of the the funding for this, and I don't have all the numbers written out like I did for the previous project, but the estimate on Phase One is pretty much covered by the money that's already in that that's already in that fund and is earmarked for has to be used either in that location for this project. So we're going to end up trying to use it there anyway. I'm kind of leaning more towards the Phase One part of this project right now.
I really like this project. I think it's a great project, but I do have some reservations, and I just I would be remiss if I didn't talk about we strive to be inclusive to our community members here, and I don't see our senior community maybe going to the amphitheater due to the heat. I also I worry about that and the usage for the whole year. So I know this is my first term here, but that is, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that. But other than that, I think it's a great project. I just want it to be able to be used throughout the year and by everyone.
Just real quick, I spent a lot of time in Trilogy and Somerset. I would say 90% of them are excited about it. They have the small stage that they use at the Pioneer Park, they're excited about this big one as well, when I've spoken to them up in Trilogy and Somerset.
Yeah, I've spoken to the same resident, not the same residents as you, but there have been many people over there that have voiced their concerns to me. So I don't know how long they've been maybe polled or maybe surveyed about this, but all of them? Okay. Okay.
So as you know, is it possible to put the first design with the faces up there? It just it really helps. Sorry. So it would it be a I have several questions that I probably should have asked them during the Q and A, but would it be possible if we did do the first phase as it's showing 81 parking spaces, will we at a later date without completely ripping it up, be able to add more parking spaces? will we at a later date without completely ripping it up be able to add more parking spaces?
Yes, Darren, if you could click one more time so that the orange border would show up? Or maybe go back, yeah, there you go.
Got it.
Yeah, so within the orange area, you could see that's the area that we would construct with phase one. So basically, a little less than half of the parking lot would be built. At a later point with phase two, the amphitheater, the rest of the parking lot would be added on to it.
So I'm happy this came back because, yeah, I definitely, this was, this is one I'm excited about. The only consideration that, one of my concerns when I came on as a new council member were similar to council member Maloney's, and I lost my pen, but it doesn't matter, it's not important right now, was very similar, but also for accessibility, it just seems like a long distance down for our differently able populations to go to the phase two amphitheater. And so I thought it was like, you gotta go pretty far from the parking lot. Is there any idea, the distance from the parking lot to the, you know, any type of, to scale type of distance for the amphitheater and to the event center?
You're completely right, Vice Mayor. It is a trek. As you can see from the event lawn area, you can see there's like a switchback walkway down. The switchbacks are necessary because there is a significant grade change that's currently there. So the switchbacks helps with the ADA accessibility, but still even then it is a long trek going down. And thinking of it, if you, when your event's done, you head back up, you're going to have to push yourself up all the way up as well. So I was working with the architect, you can see there's with the phase two, there is that new roadway that's kind of connecting down to the amphitheater at the rear of it. The thought I had was to include some accessible parking stalls back there and provided means to have visitors go from there to the amphitheater site without having to go through that switchback crosswalk area. So still not ideal, but it puts them closer to the amphitheater.
Yeah, if anybody has ever been to Cow Shakes, which is one of my favorite, I'm a big theater person, if you didn't know by my dramatic personality. And I love going to Cow Shakes. And one of the biggest complications for Cow Shakes is accessibility. If you go to their amphitheater, which is lovely and even, I mean, they're a little closer to where it's not as hot on the side of the hill. But when you go there, they literally have had to increase and provide carts for their residents, for people who attend, just to be able to make it accessible. We don't take into account that because it would either have to be whoever's renting the venue purchasing or getting carts, which is an extra added amount that I don't know for the size of the event, if we would get them to be, to do that and add the liability for transporting people back and forth. So that is something I just want to put out in the ethers that while we're excited by that, I hope that we're constantly having conversations about ADA accessibility when it comes to things like this. I wholeheartedly would love to start with the event center first and parking and just like, give us some gravel parking spaces in event center. Yep, the purple building. The reason why I keep saying this, we have limited enclosed spaces in the city of Brentwood. And the council member Maloney is correct, like, it is, it gets hot. Like, I don't know if you've been to the Concord Pavilion, but always buy the covered seats. And we're not offering any covered seats. And so I'd like to find out more about that because realistically, this is not going to be used when it is ridiculous, hot as hell, hot outside in Brentwood as it often gets. So that would be nice too, if staff can get back to us about covered seating for the amphitheater and the accessibility piece. But for me, I wholeheartedly want to see this, like we just got excited by the Sand Creek, the sports complex. I want to see something happen. I don't want to be up here and my testimony was that when I was the vice mayor, we talked 20 years ago about this amphitheater and I'm so excited 20 years later that we got the amphitheater. I want to talk about this in my time on this dais. So I would love to see us at least get cracking on the phase one. I don't, and with all, I think my AI renderings were way better, no offense to the designer. But I didn't like that the shade complex was to the side of the stage, like it doesn't give visibility to the stage. As far as the art funds being used, I appreciate staff providing us with, because we keep asking about the public art program guidelines. And so if we look at it for the public to know, it is, I think, item six with the eligible artwork. And so when we talk about it, it may be good, I hate to put it off because I, but I think when we talk about, I would like to use more public art funds than we used in the last project. I just don't know that we can use them all, as council member Oremans said. The thing that we can do is we can use it for the landscape architecture, which would be great if on the green space, we can use it for the landscape architecture. It has it directly in there that we can use it for that. And it is item, oh wait, landscape architecture is not, it's ineligible, I'm sorry. We cannot race it, I didn't say that. But we can use it for artistic, artistic design roadways and parkways and paths. So I don't know how that looks, but it has to be designed by the, it has to be, the process has to be facilitated by or designed by the artist. So we have to make sure that we are combining artists and after hearing about, we couldn't even get a RFP for the parking garage, I don't know how many artists also install some of this stuff. So if we can get, I don't know if we have to just go for it and say we want to use our funds to get the artist-designed roadway parks and paths and then the design work for exterior surfaces, I would hope maybe a stage that's artistically designed. Yeah, that would, that would be, would be great if we can add that in there. And so I would want to use some of those funds, but being very careful about making sure that we, that is eligible work. And I don't know that we can actually earmark an actual number without getting back some type of numbers or estimates on if a artist can do the work for our stage and if the artist can do the artistic design roadways, parkways and paths. But I would like to move forward with phase one.
Yeah, I'm fine with either the amphitheater or the event center. I just think we need to go for the gusto. I don't think that phase one was enough for me. I mean, ultimately, I do want the amphitheater. And it doesn't say what artists we have to hire, so I would think that we could choose a local artist to do any of this work. And if it's work that is, it says facilitated by, but can the artist work with the company that we decide? Like, once we have, you know, a bid process, then the artist works with the company to design all of the roads and the walls and the parkways and the bicycle paths and all of that good stuff. And the plazas, the arcades, like, when they say plaza, how about even the covered area? Because I would think that that could be.
So it doesn't say plaza, it says doing the artwork on the plaza or in the arcade.
In outdoor space, design elements in areas.
Such as, so you can, you can design in that area, but you can't design a plaza or the arcade, but you can, you can do the art. So I think we can give direction about it and come back without them telling us what we can actually use it for. So we can give that direction and say, we want to use public art funds, give us some bids. And we need to specifically tell them what areas we think, based on these guidelines, we'd like to have them use it on. But yeah, and it's on section, this area here.
Section six.
Yeah, yeah.
So this has been going on for a long time and we've been asking for it for a while now. So how long does staff think it would take to go out, you know, define what areas could be art? Like, because I mean, I would think this is a priority project, right? So how long is it before it could come back? Define what parts are art, how much money is left over that we still need? Because then we have to, then we can go through our CIP projects and figure out what we can finagle around those. How long do you think that'll take, Tim?
The architect said, what, 30% design or almost 30% design? So with this authority to move forward on phase one and looking is see if we can, how much of phase two we can get done as well? We can have the architect continue to work on that. And if the architect can have an expanded scope of work with us to maybe bring an artist in, that might expedite the process instead of an RFP and all that, to get an artist to then look at it. And then we have to come back to the Arts Commission per the guidelines as well. So we can come back with, much like we do with the sports complex, a couple of different options of funding that would work. And can, once we have a little further refinement of the design, then that'll give us better, more precise costing estimates of the project and then come back with a couple of options like we did with the sports complex.
You said how much of the event center, but we want to see all of it, like, right?
So event center's phase three, you talking another 5.5?
Yes, so we were, we are talking the event center and phase one. So we're going to leapfrog phase two, the amphitheater and go to the event center.
I missed that, okay.
No, is that what you were saying? The event center, yeah. So we want to do all of that and find funding for all of that.
I don't know that we have any design done on the event center yet, but that we could certainly get you back an estimate on timeframe from the architect and then see if we can get the artist to work with the architect as well, and that might speed up that design process.
Could I ask a clarifying question of Alan? Alan, the additional parking shown outside of the orange line, was that anticipated to be done as part of phase two or part of phase three?
That was anticipated to be done as part of phase two.
So if you skipped phase two and went directly to phase three, that 5.5 might go up a little bit because then it would have to include that additional parking that wasn't done for phase two, is that correct?
If you need expanded parking lot without the amphitheater. So just with the event center, we'd have to look at that, what you need in parking.
I'll have to look at exactly the, yeah, considering the square footage of the event center, how much parking is required for that, we could figure that out. Currently, within the orange is 81, the total lot was going to be 250. So I'll have to double check that as far as how much parking is required for the event center without the amphitheater. It was always envisioned that the amphitheater would come first, event center later. So for kind of switching things around, I'm going to have to look at that a little bit closer and come back to council for some information, with some information and updates. I don't have that information right now, unfortunately.
But it would be expected that it'd probably be less than 250 stalls, so that would reduce that cost of that parking lot coming from phase two to get to phase three and skip phase two. So we can come back with those numbers.
Councilmember Oremans, did you have?
I agree 100%, getting the project moving forward and getting going on it and starting progress. What Vice Mayor Pearson had said earlier about not wanting to end up looking back 20 years from now saying, we still haven't started the project. I don't want to be there either. I also don't want to be the person who's, or five years from now, or seven years from now saying, we spent $25 million on a project or $20 million to get all three phases done and they're not being used. I kind of, I still question how much a 750-seat amphitheater is going to be utilized. I talked to a lot of the, or not a lot, I talked to a few of the residents up at Trilogy who had mentioned that, yes, they kind of mentioned they were going to put an amphitheater in, but it was somewhere down at the end of the street and I never really paid that much attention to it. Not sure I would go because of the weather type advice, answers. If we decide to move forward and start moving this, we should take a real close study, a real close survey of not necessarily the whole city, oh, yeah, the whole city, because we're going to be paying for it, as to whether we're going to participate and what uses are we going to get out of a 750-seat amphitheater five, 10 years from now? I just, I think we have to pay attention to what in 20, or I'm sorry, in 2009, when the original study was done, we've experienced a whole lot of other things since then that have changed the way we deal with entertainment, the way we go to see events and do things. I just think maybe we should, I don't know, pump the brakes for a half a second and take a close look at what we're putting in and will it get used fully and to its benefit?
Thank you, everyone. A lot of discussion on this one, I've been dying to speak myself. So I would have to agree, this is something I'm incredibly excited about. I'm actually more excited about this than the soccer complex, just because I'm a theater geek and performer myself. So I have spoken to quite a few people, residents across the city, but also residents specific to that area about this project. And I would have to agree that almost all of them are excited about this. There are a few that have brought up some concerns. We talked about the noise, we talked about the lighting, we talked about parking and traffic. So we have to make sure, of course, that we're taking all of those things into consideration with the design and the build. But I do think also, I've been hearing a lot about people that perform, theater groups, et cetera, looking for a space and we don't have anything really, especially inside at this point in the city. So we have theater groups that are using our high schools and it's not necessarily the best situation for them cost-wise, usage-wise, having to clean up everything day to day after a performance so that the next day the band could go in and practice or whatever it is. So it's, logistically, it's not the best thing for someone to rent a high school for the whole weekend and have to just put everything away every night. So I do think this is necessary. I actually, I wish the event center could be an inside theater as opposed to an event center, but I don't know how feasible that would be. I would like to see this being a priority. I agree with my colleagues about it not getting pushed out too much because we've already seen what happens when a project gets pushed out and the budget ends up rising incrementally and doesn't get done. So obviously, there are other conversations that need to happen here, but my personal thought would be certainly the event center would be a huge boost. And I'd like to see that part of it, if we can make that work. I do think an outdoor amphitheater would be used. I mean, people go to the Summer Concert Series downtown, people, the concerts that happen at the streets are always packed. So it might not be comfortable, but it's certainly something that people are willing to do. They go with their ice cold water and they know what to expect. Ideally, we would have shade everywhere, we would have an indoor theater for everyone who wants to take part in like those, all of those productions, but we just have to make it work as we go. So more conversations, Captain Vice Mayor.
Yes, I just want to, can we put the picture up of the new phase one idea? Yes, okay. So I know there was a question about like, why would we do this? Oops, my screen went, no, Maloney, Tony, okay, there we go. Like, why would we do this? Well, one thing is we talked about accessibility and there's a possibility to have those people who have accessibility issues still watch what's going on down at the lower amphitheater at the upper amphitheater. Is there an idea, are those 700 and something seats just for the lower amphitheater? And is there an estimate of how many seats we can get for the upper amphitheater to have two spaces remotely going at the same time?
The way they're situated, the 750 seats, whereas for the amphitheater itself, and that would grow to 1,000 with the phase three as well, so 1,000 seats potentially. A lot of its lawn seating, there is some fixed seating closer to the stage and it is covered. And that was the intent with the designs for the amphitheater. So I just wanted to provide that insight. So there is some coverage and there is fixed seating. The bulk of the seating, however, is going to be lawn seating for the amphitheater. With your question, Vice Mayor, about the dual use, I could see that happening considering they're at two different elevations, they shouldn't conflict with each other. And as far as the seating for the smaller stage within the event lawn, it's really, there's no fixed seating, it's just an open area. People would show up with their blankets and find a spot to sit. It is a large lawn. I measured it to be about almost 40,000 square feet in size. So there's going to be ample seating and area for people to sit down around a stage. While I have the mic, I just want to point out with the event center, phase three, if we did move forward and prioritize that over phase two, we currently don't have any sort of designs. We do have a conceptual drawing for the event center, so we would have to start and spend some time and resources to have the architect start that design for the design build contract. So currently, a lot of the focus was on the phase, what we're calling now the phase ones and phase two designs. We currently have a spot of where the phase three event center would be, but no designs were prepared at this time for that, so we would have to spend some time to do that. I would, I would be cautious about setting any timelines for that event center at this point, but.
So, other question, how big is City Park? And then I have one other question after that.
City Park? I actually measured it anticipating that question. I didn't go out there with a ruler, I know, I use the Go Earth. It was about, about 12,000, 13,000 square feet. So with this one, we're talking about 40. So definitely more than double the size of City Park on this one.
How many people, sorry, how many people do we have come to the concerts at City Park? I've heard like up to 3,000, is that true? So this could accommodate way more than that for concerts?
It is a very expansive event lawn area, yes. Whether, whether so many people would show up for such a small stage, I'm not sure. The challenge is here, I think, is the, there's not, I think the one in City Park has lighting and a lot more to it. Haven't gotten, and that was going to come later with kind of the list of things for the stage, how much equipment's going to be there, lighting, possibilities and all that. And we'd have to go through the anonymized list, but that hasn't been really flushed out yet on this.
And then my last question was, I think I heard council member Oremans talking about the possibility. talking about the possibility of a feasibility study. Do we have any idea, since it hasn't been one since, what, 2007 or 2009? Do you have any idea of what the cost of a feasibility study would be? Because I also would like to find out if we can get numbers on what, excuse me, how much revenue something like this could generate if, depending on the type of design element we go with and the timeline to get a feasibility study back to us.
A quick recap on the feasibility studies. So in 2009, a feasibility was done just for the event center. And then in 2019, a feasibility was done for the amphitheater. Obviously, that was before 2020. Things have changed and that's now six years old. So we do have a starting point. We could possibly reach out to the firm that prepared the original feasibility studies, maybe have them do an update. But again, I'm not sure what the cost would be.
Councilmember Maloney?
One last question for me. What does it look like if the event center became a performance art theater? I know, I love performance art theaters, I'm sorry.
The good news is currently we have just conceptual drawings of the event center. We did, however, start a subsequent EIR process that identified an event center. So we'll have to circle back and up, figure out what that does to our timeline as well if we were to transition now from an event center to a performing arts or theater. Not sure if, the city attorney might have more to add on that, but that's, we'll have to evaluate that timeline.
Yes. We would have to evaluate it. In addition to changing the nature of the building itself, it might have downstream impacts like different ITE, traffic generation rates that would then feed into different parking stall counts and that sort of thing. So once you drop that stone in the water, we would see where the waves take us, but it could all be evaluated if the council directs us to.
Thank you.
If there's no further discussion, we will look at a motion.
One other comment, just for context. We talked earlier about the former CD building, about 20,000 square feet. The event center is about 10,000 square feet. So just for context, it's half as, half the size. If you wanted to look at expanding that and re-envisioning that whole thing as a performing arts center, that's a whole different direction that maybe we can schedule as a future meeting and have a little more time to really digest that. And then going back to Vice Mayor's questions, it depends on the space, then we can calculate what the uses are and then what the anticipated revenue could be and what the marketability and all those kinds of things would be.
Thank you.
We are ready for a motion.
Can you give us like one minute? I have a motion, but, I'm sorry.
If I'm being honest, I would prefer an enclosed theater down below in the event center and an outdoor amphitheater at the top. Personal opinion.
Yep, okay, I got it. Stop it. All right, so I move to provide the following direction to staff. Finalize the design of Phase One event lawn and prepare it for bid this summer, utilizing funds that we have in the staff report, including, but not limited.
Vice Mayor, we're gonna type it, so if you'll just slow it down and we'll put it up on the screen to make sure we capture it right.
Sorry. I could have typed it too, sorry. Okay, finalize, design of Phase One, the event lawn, and prepare it for bid this summer. Utilizing both funds in the staff report and funds from the Public Art Acquisition Fund for areas such as outdoor space design elements, interior and exterior surfaces, fixtures and functional elements, any artistic design of roadways, pathways, pedestrian or bicycle pathways.
So consistent with the guidelines, then?
Consistent with the guidelines. And Sections A through 1, 4. So you can just say consistent with the guidelines without all the extra stuff. I'll go back. Finalize design of Phase One event lawn and prepare it for bid this summer, utilizing the funds in the staff report and those public art acquisition funds that are eligible in Section 6A, 1 through 4. I think that's cleaner. And... Want me to say it again? I'll say it one more time. Finalize the design of Phase One event lawn and prepare for bid this summer, utilizing funds in the staff report and utilizing funds from the Public Art Acquisition Fund for eligible artwork as described in Section 6A, 1 through 4 of the Public Art Program Guidelines. And... Giving authority for staff time and attention to assess bringing forward Phase Three of the project, the event center. Yes.
And I can, I'll second that. In my second, can I ask a question real quick? Utility structures, can you define utility structure for me, please? It's in, it's Section Artworks, number four. Yeah, I just want to.
And for the event center, can we like have a, an idea if it can be turned into a performance theater? Just to have an idea?
I think she said it'd have to be a new EIR and stuff, right?
Well, first, I'm gonna defer to Alan on defining utility structures because that's his part of the shop. And then, Fay, we can address yours when Alan's done.
Oh, what comes to mind with utility structures, it's transformer boxes, those kind of things, anything.
What was that, I'm sorry?
Transformers.
Okay.
Those kind of things or any enclosure that has utilities within them. But most commonly, I would say like electrical equipment being hidden.
Thank you. And I'm sorry, your question was whether or not converting the event center to a performing arts center would require a new or different EIR? Was that the question?
Yes.
So right now, the project is still fairly conceptual in nature and the environmental work that's been done is not complete. So if we need to revise the scope of that, that scope can be revised. So something different could be studied. It's just going to ask, add time and money to the process, that's all.
Or we can just on the paper, scratch out that and just put theater, right?
Then, yeah, my second will stand.
Are there further questions from staff?
We're just trying to solve the problem now, trying to figure this out for you, but the amphitheater was also looked at in the EIR. And if that's reduced, that may create additional capacity for the event center or performing arts center. So those are just things we need to look at offline and we'll figure that out and get back to you.
Does that need to be incorporated into the wording of the motion?
Well, just so I understand, so is this motion then precluding the eventual development of an outdoor amphitheater entirely? Or is it just saying, "We're not moving forward with that at this time, but the environmental document should still review that as part of the future complete project"?
I can, I'd make that friendly amendment to add that to there so that Phase Two of the project to be continued at a later date, but assessed in all of the, is it the SEQA? Or in the SEQA?
And then if I could ask if we could also then update that feasibility study so we can get you the answers on what kind of potential offsetting revenue may also come from this event center or performing arts center?
So I'm gonna retract that request only because I don't know how much that's gonna cost and I'd prefer for all the money to go towards this.
We may have to come back with a contract amendment anyway, but we don't know that just yet. But if we do, then maybe we can bring that back at that point and then let you know what those costs for both would be.
Okay, just for the feasibility study?
Well, to have our architect work with an artist to make some of these funds eligible, we need, probably have to look at our scope of work and see if we need to amend that contract. I don't have that answer at this point, but if we have to come back for budget authority, we could also just give you a cost estimate on updating the feasibility study so you have those answers with more precision.
And which one are you talking about? Because I feel like 2019 was, I mean, besides the cost of construction, I think that was pretty soon. So are you talking about the other items?
2019s.
Yeah.
And it, the 2019s was the amphitheater. So we're not talking about Phase Two right now, we're talking about Phase Three, which that was done 2009.
Okay.
Can you send, I think before we do that, can you send the council the feasibility study?
We'll send you all of them.
Yeah, because I think that, I think it, I think it covered, I mean, there was a lot of people that.
If you're okay with 2009 data, we can move forward with that. But if you want to change it to a performing arts center, it could be slightly different, right? Some nuances there.
So just for clarity, you're just saying, give you numbers on how much that costs, which is what I asked. That's it, okay. I'm okay with that, just giving us numbers.
Well, numbers and time, because if it's gonna add another six months, I don't know if I want another six months.
How much time does it take?
That's the thing, it could drag on.
I mean, if we're gonna spend a lot of money on this, I would like to know, at least. It's up to, obviously, it's gonna be up to all of us to make that decision, but if we can get those numbers or get some sort of study on a performance art theater, I would be very much for that.
But I think if we could get the numbers and the time, that would be great. And can I ask, at the first section, you want all of this done, like Phase Three of the project, the event center simultaneously, right? We're not, now those are becoming one thing. I just want to make that clear, like in the motion, all of that is, that first paragraph is one thing, it's not two separate things anymore. Those are all one, right? Is that how we understand it? Okay, then my second stands.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
No opposition, the motion carries.
Can I just ask a quick question? Councilman Mendoza, as you talked about one, the, just the motion talked about Phase One and being prepared for a bid this summer. The Phase Three still has to go through design of a building. We'll have to come back to city council for approval. That's a different project than what you, I know you just voted, I just wanna, there's more to Phase Three, there's no design for a building. So you're, I apologize, I was trying to stop.
I guess my question is about economies of scale. If you're gonna do it, you should do it all at once, right?
I'm just, I want to go with what council member.
Do it all at once.
What, Councilmember Pearson's, your initial is right up here. It specifically calls out Phase One for the event lawn and then, at the same time, we'll still be working on Phase Three, but the idea that it would be ready for bid this summer is impossible. Phase Three.
So can you, I guess my, my, my direction would be is to work to get it as fast as you can so that, because we're gonna be doing all this stuff at the same time. It'd be great if we could send it out to bid at the same time because it would be better.
I would ask your engineer if he thinks he could have plans and specs ready to be bid this summer for a new building?
No, it's not, not feasible. If we were, we're gonna have it go together at once with the event center, considering like, like I mentioned, we only have conceptual drawings of the building. We don't have the schematics, we don't have the utilities, we don't have the actual starter, starting of the design. We'll need to get through that and that's gonna take, I hate to put a timeline to it, but it's not gonna be ready for this summer, for sure.
I think we go with what we voted on and then just do, with the knowledge of that Phase Three, getting everything we need is happening simultaneous. But can we put some type of limit on not to exceed a year from now? To take it out to bid on Phase Three?
Can I just jump in real quickly, just because procedurally, you've already taken the vote and now we're still talking about it. It looks as if the council may want to refine this just a little bit. So what would be the proper thing to do is for one of you to make a motion to reconsider. And then you can refine your motion. You'll vote again and make sure we've got this all crystal clear so staff is following your direction.
I think we're okay with my second. Like, the first one is going through, the first one, and you have direction to work on the event center. And I think, we didn't put it in the motion, but we said it's a priority project. So if, anything you can do to make sure this is moving fast would be really appreciated.
Just to mention too, to follow the guidelines, we have to, if we want to use the arts funds as much as possible, we need to go back to the Arts Commission with the developer and to select the artist. So a little bit of process thing that will get done as quickly as possible as well, but that could create some unanticipated delays with another commission looking at this. But we'll reinforce your strategic priority focus on this.
And again, I appreciate that, but I mean, if we have it there that is to go out to bid for the summer, that means that the Art Commission, that this will have to go to Arts Commission sooner than later because we would like to go out to bid this summer. So I understand that, but how often does the Art Commission meet between now and July, August?
Maybe monthly, but we'd want to make sure we have a product ready enough for them to consider. So months, maybe, but we'll keep you updated.
If I may, just a quick reminder that this project goes through a design-build procedure. It's not your design-bid-build. So when we go to bid, we're currently, the plan is the architect would prepare schematic drawings or 30% drawings as well as contract documents to then hire a designer and contractor to do the further designing and building. So when I say we go out to bid for that, that's, there's still gonna be a bunch of design work that still needs to be done. We could, I'm just throwing this out there that maybe we could work with the architect now to identify areas that could be reserved for art, you know, art. But again, those designs wouldn't have to be finalized until well into the summer when we have the new design-build contractor finalizing the design. So it could be, in that way, we could, we could still have the Arts Commission involved and all that and the designs won't be finalized until later summer or early fall or something. So there is time to that. There's more design that needs to be done. So when we go out to bid in summer, there's gonna be more design. We won't be starting construction per se, so I just want to clarify that.
Thank you. A lot of questions and answers, so thank you, everyone, for that. Item F4, moving forward, Chief Herbert will present the next item regarding an agreement with Flock Group Incorporated.
Second to get up on the screen. Nope. There we go. All right, good evening. We're still in the evening, good. Honorable Mayor and Council, tonight I'm gonna give you an updated proposal regarding the Automated License Plate Reader System with Flock. Before I get started, I have Lieutenant Thompson and a Flock representative, Kristin McLeod, in the audience for questions if we need to clarify any. So as you know, we presented this on February 11th and we were asked to bring it back after some questions were presented to us by council. So these are some of the questions that were posed, further questions posed by council. I won't go through each one of them here, but I will be expanding on them in a bit. So a little bit of background, in 2015, during part of the strategic plan, council had requested us to look into the ALPR system. At the time, it was with Vigilant, who's the company we're with now. In 2016, we launched a one-year pilot project of 18 LPR units spread out between fixed locations and mobile. In 2017, with the success of that first-year pilot program, we, council agreed to expand the program to our current existence of 56 cameras. So the first question was, when did we begin having conversations with Flock? Our conversation started in July of 2024. Pretty much, we're predicated on the fact that we were, Axon was, had integration in the vehicle cameras, our fleet cameras, that we were gonna be getting with the contract that we signed in December. So having two separate companies doesn't make sense at that point. In addition, the current company we have, their pay schedule is an annual, not a fiscal. So we knew we would be ending in that contract in December and then we could pick up this one and start moving forward. So when it comes to what did we actually purchase in December of 2023? So that was a five-year contract with Axon that came with a suite of amenities to include evidence.com, body worn cameras, tasers, interview rooms and in-car cameras. So the new in-car cameras, Fleet 3s, are integrated with Flock ALPR, which is called the Vehicle Fingerprint Software. Easiest way to describe it is, it's no different than buying a phone. Easiest way to describe it is, it's no different than buying a phone. Your phone comes with apps. Some of them, if you want to use them, you got to pay for them. That is the case here. If we want to access the plates that Flock is recording while these vehicles are being driven, we have to have a subscription with Flock. So when it comes to privacy concerns, the data that we collect on, out of our cameras, is our data. It's just being housed in the cloud with Flock. So in the event that someone were to, the biggest, the big question was, if a federal agency were to have served a subpoena or a search warrant for data related to Brentwood cameras, and they served it to Flock, Flock would then turn around and call us and say, this has been served on you. We would get with legal, have discussions as to how we would move forward from there. The other question was, can, do we have to store it in the cloud? Can we store it locally? The best answer is no. I talked with our IT, and they explained it's extremely expensive, depending on volume, to actually try to house it here in town, as opposed to using the AWS cloud with end-to-end encryption. When it comes to the contingency funds, I've been writing contracts for council for quite a while, and the, one of the frustrating things I ran into early on is, I needed three thousand dollars more on a contract, and because I didn't build a contingency in, it would have meant having to come back to council. So in order to help prevent those things, we build in these contingencies, in this case with Flock. Because it has video cameras, we would use this contingency to either, basically to address a hotspot. If we ended up with a hotspot that we needed a camera, we would be able to get a hold of Flock. Flock would be able to have a camera up and running in X number of weeks in that location, which then would be giving us either a visual or license plates from that area to help curtail any of the crime that's occurring. Any of those unused funds would go back into the general fund at the end of the year from our budget, would be a budget savings that'd go back into the general fund. So we're increasing cameras from the eight, let me see, I've got it written down, twenty cameras in eight different fixed locations currently, to thirty-two cameras in thirty-two locations. So with our current system, the cameras are very narrow field, so if I have three lanes of traffic, I need three cameras in that direct, in that area. Sand Creek, when you leave the streets of Brentwood, sorry, there's three cameras for that side, three cameras for the other side. Those cameras also require electrical and modems. So there's a modem up there that we're paying for monthly to transmit the data. With Flock, it's a wider field of view, less cameras needed to cover more lanes, and they're solar powered and maintained by Flock. So we'll deploy them in a, I'm going to show you the map here in a second, in multiple locations to have a three hundred sixty-degree field of coverage for the city, for egress, and then we'll be using the three surveillance cameras, one to get a better coverage of City Park, one in the downtown area at Oak, and first, it'll cover kind of the farmer's market, thank you, farmer's market footprint, will have visuals in those directions, and then one up on the new pedestrian over crossing over Highway four. It's kind of a dark area for us right now, and it would be nice to have a visual out there. Can we reduce the number of cameras? Yes, it's possible. We lose coverage, and you'll see on the map when I show you here, it would reduce coverage and reduce the solvability of crime. Come on, there we go. So on the left is Vigilant, and the blue dots are where those cameras are currently located, and on the right is Flock, and you can see how much coverage we current, that would give us throughout. The red dots are where the cameras would be, the blue dots are the coverage for egress. You can't commit a crime in Brentwood unless you actually came into town, but normally when they commit a crime, they leave town, and that's when we want to capture their plates, if we don't capture them in the act. So when it comes to our budget, we do a really good job of budgeting as close as we can possibly get to zero in our supplies and services. That doesn't always happen. We do end up with some surplus. I will say, we, my finance, Sheila, Sheila Ogden, I had her do an analysis, I'm sorry, it's getting late, and I was up late last night, of our current budget, where we are, where we're on track to be, and we are on track. We're a little ahead of where we were last year, so I don't have budget savings right now to be able to pay for this out of the budget. These are some cities in Contra Costa County. Antioch and Walnut Creek are coming online here shortly. Pittsburgh is in talks with Flock. They haven't moved in a, they're not far enough in for me to have listed them here, but I had a conversation with the chief yesterday, so they are, don't know when they're going to go. But, and then, not only within the county, you can see the surrounding agencies, Tracy Stockton Livermore, so our external perimeter. And to show you the power of Flock, this just happened on Sunday, March second, we had an eighty-eight-year-old man go missing. His daughter came over to find him. He shouldn't be driving, but he has a car and keys, and he decided to take his truck and go for a drive. When his daughter found out he was gone, it was nine forty-six at night. His cameras in his home showed him at home at twelve o'clock in the afternoon was the last time he had been seen. We have a lateral officer we hired. He was the Flock administrator at the agency he came from. He called them for an outside assist, asked them to run this plate through Flock. They did, and lo and behold, he was driving all over the Bay Area. And fortunately, by the time we got the silver, silver alert entered into the system and the plate entered in the system, he hit on a Flock camera at one, one eleven AM in the morning in Fremont. Fremont PD was able to go and contact him, and he was sent to the hospital for some evaluation. But had we not had those cameras or that ability, it could have been even days before someone found him. He didn't have a cell phone, he was left at the house. So there was no ability for us to be able to track him. These cameras provide eyeballs three hundred sixty-five days a year at all these intersections, and the patrol car, when it's driving around, it's scanning every plate, even though the driver of the car is bobbing their head, looking back and forth, the camera on the car is recording everything coming at him or in front of him. So it is a, a great force multiplier. Here's some samples of what we see on our end with Flock and what Flock actually picks up camera-wise. I did have one that, I don't know where the agency is in their investigation, so I didn't want to share it here. But you see, the third picture over kind of got a broad view of, of the vehicle. We received a flyer from a neighboring agency looking for help to identify a subject who passed through a Flock camera similar to this. The only difference is, there was a gun, a guy holding a gun, shooting at another vehicle while hanging out the passenger window. So that's the power these cameras have, and you can see the data we get. It's all tracked, who's, who's receiving it, when they're looking into the system to do searches, it's all captured. We have a policy in place. We've had a policy in place for years related to cameras. So obviously, the benefits are, this will, the technology is much more advanced than what we currently have. It assists us with our solvability of crime, because not only are we getting access to our data, we're getting access to all those agencies that you saw. Data's, the scans are kept for thirty days before they disappear. Most of the time, the crime we're looking for, we, it's within that thirty-day window. Our recommendation tonight is to approve the contract with Flock, to give us that extra ability to be able to serve our citizens and keep them safe. Questions of me or either one of my staff?
Thank you, chief. Do we have clarifying questions? Okay, we'll be saving those for discussion. We'll be moving into public comment now.
At this time, the public is permitted to address city council on this agenda item. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand to speak. If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the city clerk. We'll take public comments from those participating in the council chambers first, followed by those participating via Zoom. Remarks are limited to three minutes. Your microphone will be muted if you speak on items that do not pertain to this agenda item. We did receive five written public comments in advance of this item. The first speaker I have is Melissa.
Pull up, I'm going to talk fast. While I appreciate the police department's commitment to enhancing public safety through advanced technologies, the proposal to adopt Flock's expanded ALPR system raises several critical concerns regarding privacy, data security, and effectiveness. It is imperative to carefully evaluate these issues before proceeding. Implementing an extensive ALPR network capable of capturing detailed vehicle information, including license plates, color, make, direction of travel, speed, and other unique characteristics, can lead to pervasive surveillance. This level of monitoring may infringe upon individual privacy rights and deter lawful activities due to fear of being constantly watched. The ACLU has expressed concerns that such surveillance could disproportionately affect minority communities and lead to a chilling effect on civil liberties. The centralized, centralized cloud storage using AWS, AWS of vast amounts of vehicle data poses significant security risks. Unauthorized access or data breaches could expose sensitive information about residents' movements. Notable examples of AWS data breaches include the Pegasus Airlines breach in May two thousand twenty-two, the Capital One breach in two thousand nineteen, and the gravy analytics data exposure in January of two thousand twenty-five. All of these left millions of independent users' data open to whoever wanted it. While Flock claims substantial crime reduction in areas utilizing their technology, according to the ACLU, they have steadfastly refused to allow the independent security technology reporting and testing outlet IPVM to obtain one of its license plate readers for testing, even though IPVM has tested all of Flock's major competitors. Some reports suggest that the effectiveness of ALPR systems in reducing crime may be overstated and lack rigorous scientific validation. For instance, a study highlighted by TechDirt questions the methodology behind Flock's claims, indicating that the data might not conclusively support significant crime reduction. The deployment of ALPR technology without robust oversight can lead to legal challenges. In Norfolk, Virginia, residents have filed a federal lawsuit in October of two thousand twenty-four, arguing that the city's installation of over a hundred and seventy ALPR cameras embodied unconstitutional, warrantless surveillance, and violated their Fourth Amendment rights. Such legal precedents suggest that implementing a similar system in Brentwood could expose the city to litigation and associated costs. ALPR, ALPR systems are not infallible and can produce false positives, leading to wrongful stops or detentions. In Austin, Texas, concerns were raised about false positive stops where individuals were incorrectly identified by the system, resulting in unwarranted police interactions. Such incidents can erode public trust in law enforcement and may disproportionately affect innocent citizens. So my last few questions, just kind of going on the amount of money, this is for the next two years. It is a lease, what will be budgeted beyond that? And then our current system, Vigilant, their, their info database is accessible by nine thousand.
Next speaker is Brian.
Okay, good evening, Madam Mayor, council, city staff. My name is Brian Maloney, and I'm here tonight in support of the Flock safety cameras. I'm a law enforcement professional working at a police department in the East Bay, and I'm also a resident here in Brentwood. The agency I work for has Flock, and I want to provide some firsthand knowledge about how important this technology is for public safety and security and investigative leads. Currently, at the department I work at, we roughly have sixty-three cameras strategically placed throughout the city, and I'll let you know why that is significant. Just about every day, through the Flock's camera system, our officers locate stolen vehicles, felony vehicles, or missing person vehicles. Once these vehicles trip the cameras, alerts are immediately sent to each patrol officer's vehicle, providing the location and direction the vehicle is traveling. As officers begin responding to the area, they continue to get updated alerts each time the vehicle passes another camera while traveling. In most cases, the vehicle is quickly located due to the constant, constant location updates. With limited cameras, it's very difficult to locate a vehicle as it travels through the city. It would have to be found on luck rather than real-time intelligence. Our agency has been successful utilizing Flock cameras on vehicles that had either just been stolen or just used in a crime. It enables officers to get exact vehicle information they might have not otherwise had. And in many cases, vehicle travels to other cities. The surrounding agencies around my department also have Flock, so we can see when it trips those cameras, and then real-time notification is made to that agency. With the agencies working together and using Flock, those crime vehicles are quickly located most of the time. Our officers locate and stop several cars a week that have been entered into the Flock system as vehicles used in crimes in those other cities. Those stops that we have made led to the arrests of suspects of those crimes, evidence recovery, and most likely, or most of the time, recovering illegally possessed firearms. This makes our city safer, as the suspects from these other cities would have most likely committed crimes in our city also. The other cities that have Flock have also located our crime vehicles that we have entered into the system and made those, those arrests. This has ranged from violent crimes to grab-and-run thefts. This shared network that all agencies have, or are going to, is unlike any other instant networking, and locating suspects, missing people, and recovering people's stolen cars more efficiently than ever before. Recently, we had a shooting where a sixteen-year-old was shot. The suspect vehicle, the suspect fled in a vehicle which was captured on a nearby security camera from a distance. All that could be made out from that video was the type of vehicle and color, no make, model, or license plate. Doing a search of the Flock camera in that, in that area at the time, with a limited description, the suspect vehicle was identified with a license plate. The vehicle was located in another nearby city that also had Flock cameras, and the suspect was soon thereafter identified. Flock brings law enforcement agencies up to date in policing using real-time intelligence rather than relying on being at the right place at the right time. Thank you.
Next speaker is Fenton.
Good evening, elected officials. My name is Fenton. I'm a resident of Brentwood for over ten years. My family lives here, my children go to school here, and public safety is paramount. I am also a law enforcement officer, not at the same agent as Brian. I work at a different agency in the East Bay in Alameda County. I run our real-time crime information center. I brought Flock to most of the East Bay and our agency. I have firsthand seen the successes, and I have seen the wins. As a Brentwood resident and a peace officer, I want the best tools and technology for our Brentwood police department and our citizens. We too had outdated Vigilant technology that was expensive to replace and did not work nearly as good as Flock. We have since replaced all of that with nearly ninety-two Flock cameras covering majority of our jurisdiction. Our neighboring cities of Berkeley, Oakland, and San Francisco have implemented the same technology as the chief described. I've seen firsthand working investigations in homicides, rape, and robbery, how these cameras have helped victims, which is our primary concern, preventing crime, especially as a robbery detective, and being able to solve home invasion robberies, carjackings, and organized retail theft, which we had little to no evidence or leads other than Flock. These crimes would not have been solved without these cameras. Flock is not only for crime. As the chief mentioned, just two weeks ago, I personally was able to locate a dementia patient who walked away from their home, took his wife's car, and drove away. In less than an hour, that dementia patient was located and brought home safely. As Brian had mentioned, we would, might not find that individual for days. As one of the two administrators for Flock Safety, I want to dispel any misinformation. We conduct routine audits. There is no sharing with federal immigration enforcement, and we have hundreds of inquiries that are all vetted. In over two years, I have not seen a single person be tracked unlawfully or any misuse or abuse of this system. We have also been audited by the NAACP and ACLU with no issues. As a citizen of this city, I implore you to please consider this technology. Governor Gavin Newsom has even supported Flock Safety and put over two hundred cameras along our freeways due to freeway shootings and other freeway violence. I'm available for comments or questions if you have any. I've been considered in court an expert in Flock safety, ALPR technology, and I've been working on these programs for over fifteen years. The sharing of information between law enforcement is invaluable, and it's not just crime, it is public safety. It has many purposes. So please, consider this technology.
I have no additional cards in person. I do have two hands raised in Zoom. Danny, go ahead.
Unmute. Okay, well, I had an actual different speech until the previous gentleman came up. Okay, well, I had an actual different speech until the previous gentleman came up. Let me, I need to address that fast, all right? How the gentleman said he uses it in the town he works in is not designed to be used the way he said he uses it. The surveillance, home invasion, petty crimes has nothing to do with what this technology is being offered for. Now, the irony here is that, in principle, I believe in this, but not for the reasons that were stated, okay? When I was a kid, a kid in the area where I grew up, oh yeah, there were certain concerns out there. Fast forward to today, active shooter, cops in middle schools. These are unfathomable to me as an adult. So I get in principle why we need to do this. I was the recipient of one of these pullovers. I was popped, and again, that set up all kinds of lights in my head, but officer came up, explained to me why, showed me why the license plate kicked up an error, and I was, okay, cool, I get it, technology's great. And he explained in detail what that plate, what my plate read and what they thought it read. So I understand, and I'm, again, for it. Yes, we need assistance in preventing sideshows and other vehicle-related issues. This technology does help in keeping our city safe. But this also can set up yet another, the broken taillight syndrome. And what I mean by that, in the very limited time I have, I don't see a clock this time, has the best of intentions, but now, you know, you get pulled over, you wind up, you know, getting a ticket or whatever, and there is no check and balance to make sure everyone's being upfront and honest, okay? And what I mean by that, our specific reports going to the chief where they can do, you know, make sure everything's legit, first off. Second off, I read the RFP from this company, and they do not give any indication or conflicting information.
The speaker's timer has expired. The next speaker is Mary Sol.
Thank you. I think that, I know that we need something, but I'd like some safeguards put in, and Flock cameras raise a lot of privacy concerns due to their potential for widespread surveillance and data sharing, as well as concerns about potential errors leading to innocent people getting targeted. So something to look at or making sure because of some of the drawbacks is mass surveillance and data sharing. Many agencies do not have documentation usage or retention policies and lack of guarantees that stored data is appropriately secured, so how are we going to do that? Potential for false positives and errors, lacks of transparency and oversight. Some argue that technology lacks sufficient transparency oversight, raising questions about how the collected data is used and who has access to it. Lack of safeguards for assessing the data, unclear data retention policies, lack of adequate confirmation of data recipient's rights, potential solutions and advocacy. So what do you, what do you suggest? You know, advocates suggest implementing policies that mandate fair camera placement, limited data retention periods, and ensure cameras are used to ensure public safety, not erode privacy. So I just hope that everyone's looking at all of this while we're also trying to be safe. Thank you.
I have no additional hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you, Amanda. We will move into council discussion. Who would like to start, Vice Mayor?
I'd like to start. I want to also thank everyone's comments, and I have a bunch of questions, and I think, it seems like I see the next day, when I ask certain questions about law enforcement, that people think I'm not pro-law enforcement. I'm very much pro-law enforcement. I think anyone who's anti-law enforcement is not the brightest person because they're the first people you call when you have an emergency. That being said, there are a large number of people in our city who have questions, and so I do have some of those questions if anyone from Flock or from our police department can answer these questions. So one is that the question was raised, asked raised by some of the callers, where that they are concerned about privacy, mass surveillance, and creating a system of producing a comprehensive record of vehicle movements across cities, potentially tracking without probable cause. So what is this, what do we have in place? And I have exactly one, two, three, four, five, six, seven questions. So what can we do to ensure that Fourth Amendment probable cause will not be violated?
Yes, thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor, Council, City Staff and Community. My name is Kristen McLeod, and I'm a community engagement manager with Flock Safety. Thank you for that question. So we believe that, and case law overwhelmingly shows, that use of LPR is not a violation of a Fourth Amendment. Some important points are, these cameras are placed at fixed locations, and they're aimed at public right-of-way. They're taking still images of the rear of vehicles, and again, it's a point in time, and there's no way to continuously track the movements or the movements of the whole of a person. The system is focused on vehicle details, not people.
So based on what you said, in effect, it will not affect civil liberties, and people shouldn't be worried, discouraged from expressing their right to free movement and assembly because it's not looking in the car at the person but at the plates?
Exactly.
Okay. The other thing is, based on some of the ACLU concerns that were raised, some of the questions were, what about the disproportionate impact concerns about these systems being deployed on low-income communities and communities of color, like the data being used? Specifically, right now, that is being used, and I thought, I think this was brought up to enforce laws from other jurisdictions federally, when we have controversial issues like abortion and immigration. What are the responses to those?
Certainly, thank you. So first, the data, the data that Chief shared, all of the data is owned 100% by the city, by the department. That also means that the department, the administrators of the department, as this gentleman shared, it was in full control, and so those data sharing, you can ensure that the data sharing aligns with your community values. There's also laws in place in the state of California that prohibits data sharing outside the state of California. It also prohibits the use of LPR to enforce immigration, for example. So there are guardrails in place, and your department's policy will also reinforce those.
Okay. And Flock is a company, what is the company's commitment to equity, inclusion, and belonging?
Yeah, so Flock, wholeheartedly, so we were, we were built with privacy in mind. We also take great care when we're working with different cities and departments with the, on the deployment of cameras. We're considering ingress and egress of the city. We're looking at crime patterns and traffic patterns. This is also something that we strongly believe you can utilize technology to mitigate bias in policing. Again, this is focused on alerting officers to wanted vehicles. It's also capturing vehicle details, and your department is utilizing the system for purposes of criminal investigative and public safety purposes only. It was mentioned, we have a search reason that is required to access information. All of the user ID, along with that search reason, is recorded, and that is retained indefinitely. That also provides your administrators of the system an audit trail, so you can go and ensure that the system is being used in accordance with department policy.
Thank you, and I appreciate, I wanted to thank and appreciate Brian Maloney of Hayward PD. Thank you so much for your comments calling people suspects. I don't know if maybe Chief, it was a misspoke, but when you said we can catch people after they leave after committing a crime, the police investigate crimes and collect evidence, but we don't determine guilt, so thank you for calling them suspects. And I think that this is a great, not a bad idea. I would just add that we should put in some assurances in place for policies that we want so that we can reassure people that their civil liberties won't be violated. And I think that the suggestion, and I'm so sorry, I don't remember your name, I couldn't really hear it, but I really like the transparency piece about being more transparent in our, in our area to open our doors for an assessment as your department does with the NAACP and the ACLU audits. I'd like something like that to be included in our policies here, that we have a transparency piece on a regular and consistent basis.
Vice Mayor, if I could also add, so Flock has a unique feature, it's a transparency portal, and what that is, it's a Flock-generated, public-facing webpage that provides your community insights into how your department is utilizing the system, including information on policy. Many departments choose to include prohibited and acceptable uses. It provides an overview, you can link your department's policy. It can also, you know, list the law enforcement agencies that your department is sharing information with. So again, a really great way to share your, with your community, how the system is being used and what for.
That's cool. Is that something we can put on our, like, will we have like a connection on our website to that, or would they have to log in?
Yes, you can embed the link into, into a city webpage.
Thank you so much for answering all the questions. I appreciate it.
Absolutely, thank you.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, I think I go back to the budget. I'm still not happy with the way this budget item came about. I think it was inappropriate to sneak it into consent because that's what it feels like to me. I don't think we should have done that, and I don't think we should ever do that again. I think if you're going to ask for something that's a quarter of a million dollars, we need to plan for it in the budget process. And, you know, I've been talking about the budget process. I think we need a bottoms-up budget, not just your department, but all departments the next time around instead of a 4% increase across the board. So in the future, I would hope that we don't come forward with items that are a quarter of a million dollars when you see we have all of these other projects going. That's number one. Number two, so this, your software is going to court over what some people perceive being the Fourth Amendment violation. What can you tell us about that court case?
Yeah, so that court case is in Norfolk, Virginia, and two community members brought forth that lawsuit against the city claiming that it is a violation of their Fourth Amendment. We believe that it is not a violation of the Fourth Amendment, again, because the cameras are placed, they're fixed locations, they are taking a point-in-time capture of the rear of a vehicle that is on a public right-of-way, and again, not capturing the whole of a particular individual's movements. And so that court case is still pending, there has not been a resolution decided, but I will say that there are multiple federal and appellate court cases that have concluded that evidence obtained from LPR is not a violation of the Fourth Amendment.
Okay, because the judge said, the complaint alleges facts similarly similar to those of the conference jury, that the Supreme Court found clearly violates society's expectations of privacy. So I guess my current concern is, if this goes to court, and this is for our staff, and it is deemed that it is a violation of the Fourth Amendment, do we just throw out the equipment?
The equipment's leased, so we would end up-
So we would just send it back?
We would cancel the contract based on the wording, 30-day notice, and they would come out and remove their equipment and take it.
Okay, so what does that look like when, if it's, if you're deemed violating the Fourth Amendment, do we just call you, come pick it up, and then what, what kind of money do we get back? Because we're spending a quarter of a million dollars, what kind of restitution do we get for that?
So I'm, that's something that I would have to pose to our legal team as far as if there is a, if there is restitution that would be involved, but since it is, as Chief mentioned, it's a subscription-type model and under contract. Again, if something were to come out that it is a violation of Fourth Amendment and the cameras need to be shut off, we would come, shut them off, and take them out.
Okay.
If I can add something to that, Councilmember Mendoza? There would be a difference because the city's being used or sued, so it might be an action of the person that actually utilized that data, so we'd have to evaluate the actions of that officer, that detective that actually did that.
Yeah, they're not talking about the officer in this case, I'm going to get to that. They're talking about the overall system, and they come, like, talking about the overall system is overreaching when it comes to monitoring society as a whole and that it's a violation. So that's in court. It just got approval to move forward on the fourth, it just went to the latest judge, so it's going to the next court, so we'll see, hopefully soon, what's going on there. So there has been instances where Flock data has been shared, like there was an officer that shared information about his wife. So what are you doing when information is shared and it's not supposed to be? Because there's quite a few instances that I've read online.
I'm not aware of an officer sharing the data. There have been instances of misuse. I'm aware of two in particular where an officer utilized the system inappropriately, and that the system did exactly what we designed it to do. It captured the use. That department, the administrators were auditing the use. They found that quickly, and that person was, I know in at least one instance, was disciplined and fired and potentially facing criminal charges. So again, we've designed the system very intentionally so that departments can audit the use and ensure that the use is appropriate and in line with policies and any state, any local state laws.
So the data, I think, is believed after 30 days?
Yes, so just if I, we can digress a second. This system is no different than running someone's driver's license. It's a right-to-know, need-to-know. If an officer feels they have a right to know what the address of the girl that they drove by, or a man that drove by, and they're interested and they ran them in the system, it was brought to our attention, it would be handled as an internal affair. Based on that egregious of an act would most likely lend in up to termination, so.
Yeah, but do you have to, like, if someone hadn't audited that set of data, would it come up, come up ever?
So we strongly encourage departments to include in their policy a regular auditing process and outline that cadence.
Do we have an auditing process in place?
Yes, I, we just updated the policy to reflect the most recent best practices in anticipation of moving forward. Even in our old policy, we had an auditing trail in place, which was conducted by staff on a basis, I don't have it off the top of my head. It's a policy that's in place, so theoretically, it should be being followed. I know that's probably not the best answer you want to hear, but the policy is designed to protect the public from misuse.
Yeah. What is the city's policy on sharing data? Like, I'm reading about sharing data, a lot of agencies are like, kind of careful in not sharing data anymore because of things like this and lawsuits. So what is our city's policy about sharing data?
I don't know the city's policy, but when it comes to the ALPR data, we don't share it with anyone outside of the state of California, we're not allowed to.
Okay, so how do, how do we come up with our own city policy? Like, is there cities that are like now not sharing the data because there is issues and there's been lawsuits? So what are we going to do in our city? Like, if you just get a random call from Antioch, like, do you need a warrant? Like, how, what is your, what triggers you to decide to share the data?
It depends on what they're asking for in, in that moment. So if it's, say, a missing person, and they, in this case, we have this missing person, we had no way to ping their cell phone, and we called, gave them the information, they're going to document in their system that we called with our case number, and when they did the search, they have to account for that search, even though it's not for their agency, it was for us. So we, we have to verify, normally, we verify through the CLUTS system if somebody is calling saying, hey, we're for Antioch and I need some information. We use, we go through dispatch to get that type of information.
So can we put a policy in place about sharing data so that the officers know exactly when and when not they can share data? And it's not just like on an officer deciding or an admin deciding, and it, there's a clear step, like, steps that have to be taken to do that?
We can do research on that, yeah. I can, I can look into working with our legal team that does our policies.
Sorry, I had another question, I can't remember, so go ahead, because I have another-
Councilmember Maloney.
Okay, so I think I want to start back from basics. When an officer responds to a call for service that's pertaining to, let's say, an assault with a deadly weapon, a stolen vehicle, a carjacking, or whatnot, they take that police report from that victim. Once that police report is taken, they have to contact their dispatch to enter it in the California Law Enforcement Teletype System, which is specific to stolen vehicle systems. So there's specific procedures that they have to do to enter this for California Department of Justice. Once that's complete, that report has to be approved by a supervisor, so therefore, everybody knows what the elements of the crime are, that this vehicle has been stolen or involved in a felony crime or whatnot. So if it's a felony vehicle, let's say, a robbery vehicle, a carjacking vehicle, an assault with a deadly weapon vehicle, whatever the case is, that gives the officer the fortitude to enter it in the system that would alert- that would alert any officer that would run that license plate to learn that this is involved in a felony crime. So that goes into Flock, that gets embedded into Flock. So let's say officers are driving their cars, their camera reads this license plate, it's going to automatically get alerted that this car is a felony vehicle because the police report has been already entered, and it's already with the California Department of Justice. Now, on the other side of Flock, when you do enter a vehicle, if you're entering a felony vehicle that hasn't been entered yet, there is a accountability process where, for example, the agency I work with, a supervisor has to enter it and has to approve it, and it goes through a process, because that is the policy and procedure that's set in place. We could also set it into place where you do run a license plate in Flock, like, let's say for a missing person or whatnot. There is a category in there, a mask, where you have to enter the incident number that you're researching for, and the date and the time, or whatever the reason is, and that's set in policy. So all those different points have to be set in policy to ensure that people's civil rights are not violated, and nobody's just going in there without it, because the system is gonna alert you if you're just running plates without that information. We, you're, we're supposed to set those audits, and the police department can set that within their policy and procedure to ensure that people's rights are not violated.
Okay, so now this concerns me even more, because you could answer all of that, and we're buying equipment that we haven't even thought about, like, we don't have all of that. Like, when I ask a pol- But I just asked about a policy, and she spoke to all of her stuff, but-
We have an ALPR policy, and we've had one in, we had to have one when we went to Vigilant, it's in the system, it's policy 463.
So when, I guess, when I just asked about a policy, we do have a policy, we don't-
Yes, ma'am, we have an ALPR policy. We just updated it to best practice based on some recommendations from Flock and some other agencies. So there were some nuances added. I just got back from out of town, so I don't have it with me, it was updated last week, it to reflect those best practices that, as it relates to us moving forward to Flock.
Yeah, and, and I think I've always supported everything you want. This is, this one seems a little scary on the data, especially what's go, with, what's going on with immigrants right now. I mean, it's a scary thing. So I, I don't, I, I push you not because I don't think you guys do a great job and you need equipment, I know you do. Again, I said it before, I've always said yes to everything. But we also need to be sure that when we're voting, we're protecting people that need the protection. And right now, what I see it is, there's a lot of people in our community that are really scared right now, so I have to ask these questions.
I understand, and what that, I understand the ask, I'll just leave it at that.
So that was my other question, I almost forgot. Is there any time that you think the federal government, immigration, can come and demand this data?
So, Flock to date has not received any sort of federal request or subpoena for immigration enforcement purposes. It is possible that we could receive one, but as Chief noted earlier, we would, the data is yours, you own it a hundred percent. And so, in that instance, Flock would immediately alert you all to that receipt of that request, or that subpoena or court order for the information, because it is your data, and then that would then give you an opportunity to respond.
But this is no different than Apple, right? If Apple gets a subpoena for information, they have to give up the information. So if you received it at Flock, you would have to give the information up?
No, the data is owned a hundred percent by you, by the city, by the department.
Right?
We are the guardian of the data, yes.
Yeah, I-
But we don't, we do not own it, we will never sell or share to a third party.
So if there was a court order for you to give up data, you could say no?
We would alert the city because it is your data, and then work with you all to respond to that request.
But if you, if you, Flock, not the city, received a request from the government, like a court order, could, would you have to release the data?
Can I say something? They would, they would notice us.
Yeah.
And then we, from our space, can try to oppose that. But from their space, they, I mean, their legal department can handle it how they want to, as opposition if they will want. Because I'm sure, if every, if they got all these subpoenas, if every city had an issue, and the cities are their clients, they're gonna want to oppose those type of things. But I don't think she standing right here could tell you, answer that question.
I guess that's my fear.
I'm sorry, and I don't want to speak for you, but-
No, and that's, and something else that I would like to, that's important to note, is the thirty-day data retention. At the thirty-day mark, it's, images are deleted on a rolling basis. So if an image is taken, it starts that lifespan of the image. At the thirty-day mark, it is hard-deleted and unrecoverable. In the event that we would receive a subpoena for that information, again, by the time that we would receive that subpoena, it is very likely that those images have been hard-deleted and are unrecoverable. Images are only retained as part of a criminal investigation in your police department's evidence repository system. So again, I just want to note that important piece of limited, short data retention period.
So you can, like, if our police department calls you and says, retain this data from this day, because we're gonna go to court, or whatever the case may be, you can hold on to that, but everything else is stripped from your system?
Exactly, and the department can do that automatically in the system. So if they, they can download an image as part of a criminal investigation, and then it would then be in your evidence repository system and held there. All of the other images, just of passersby in the community that are not wanted vehicles, that are not being searched for criminal investigative purposes, those images, again, are hard-deleted and unrecoverable at that thirty-day mark.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, not as, not quite as many questions. But some of the callers had brought up that when Benton was speaking about the 187, 211, I'm sorry, the murder, or the robbery, or the kidnapping vehicles being searched for, one of the callers had mentioned, that's not what the system is designed to do. Isn't that exactly what it's designed to do?
That is exactly what it's designed to do, it's to alert police of wanted vehicles. And it's also there, so in the event a crime occurs, your officers can go back and search for a suspect vehicle, a vehicle that was involved in, in a criminal act, and they have that objective information. And again, this is an investigative tool for your officers to use to solve crime, and respond to crime. And locate missing persons.
So, just on top of that, the, somebody had brought up, and I want to say it was Melissa, but I'm not a hundred percent sure, the false IDs. We're talking about the false IDs of license plates, not of human beings, correct?
Correct.
And is it Texas that had the false positive ID lawsuit? That, how, what, what is that all about? What is, how does it falsely identify a license plate?
So, we pride ourselves on accuracy, this is technology. So, we do, with each image, if our machine learning has determined that, you know what, there may be a character in the license plate, a Q that might have been read as a zero or an O, it comes with a caution triangle, so it's alerting that officer, that user, proceed with caution. We also encourage departments to include in their policy to verify, to visually verify that alert prior to enforcement action. So those situations of the quote-unquote "false positives" can be avoided, and that's a very important, very important piece. So again, we pride ourselves on accuracy, but we do have those safeguards in place, and again, encourage departments to include that verification of hotlist alerts prior to proceeding.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm gonna jump in. We may put together some privacy policies to protect. But if we receive a data share request from any other city in California, how can we be sure that their civil liberties policies are going to align with ours, and that they're not going to misuse the data?
So all of the state, all agencies in the state of California have to follow the law of not sharing with outside the agency? So if an officer from another agency accesses the Flock system and finds out a plate was captured on a Brentwood camera, and then they use it nefariously, then that would fall on that agency to do their investigation. I don't know that that agency would then reach out to us and say, one of our people used your data inappropriately.
So we might not actually even find out?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
But there's, I, I don't imagine there's anything in a policy that we could create that would prevent something like that from happening.
No, if, we're either going to share, or we're not gonna share.
Okay.
And that becomes counterproductive.
And the whole purpose of it is to share, okay. Another question was around the numbers, because it, it looks like the currently... Currently, we have fourteen in operation of Vigilant cameras, is that right? But we actually have forty-three offline.
Yes.
When, when we purchased all those cameras, were we, was there a plan to kind of take some offline and switch them where, I mean, I'm just trying to figure out the numbers there.
Yeah, the plan was to escalate this, to expand the system as we went. It became cost-prohibitive because of the cost of the cameras, needing, each one needing to have a modem, each one needing to have power, so locations to put them became slim. And then, one of the other needs is, if you had multiple lanes, you needed a choke point, so you could limit the number of cameras. So, like Sand Creek, we had to have three cameras, or you'd miss a lane of traffic. And if the suspect is in that lane, the plate's not getting captured. So, as Flock came on the scene early on, their system wasn't as robust at the time as Vigilant. So we waited, maintained the Vigilant cameras that we had. Vigilant has gone through a couple businesses, has, have bought them out. They're now settling with, or their parent company now is Motorola. They're not very responsive right now, related to anything. We've had an extremely difficult time, Lieutenant Thompson has, just getting some answers on what would it cost for you to come out and look at our system and give us a cost? I can tell you a neighboring agency who had Vigilant, who has since switched to Flock, they quoted them a hundred thousand dollars to come out and just do an analysis on their camera system and see if it was even operable or fixable. And so if the cameras are at end of life, then you just spend a hundred thousand dollars when you could have merged over to Flock and got a bunch of cameras that are fixable. If it goes down, Flock comes out and replaces it.
Thank you. If I'm understanding correctly, you're proposing thirty-two Flock cameras?
Yes.
If they have a broader scope and are visually stronger than what we currently have, why is there such a jump in numbers?
Locations. So if you look at the, my system's not up there anymore. When you look at the map, the, we're expanding to have a full three-hundred-sixty-degree perimeter of the city. So if you commit a crime in town, your license plate's going to get capped.
Okay.
Is the idea. That doesn't also include the twenty-five vehicles that we have in the fleet that have cameras that aren't active right now. So when we do sign a contract with Flock, those cameras will then be active also. So cumulatively, it's a larger number, the ones we're looking for, for the fixed locations is thirty-two.
Okay, and then my last question, thank you, Chief, would be around the, the budgeting issue. And I think, I'm trying to remember, we, we discussed this at one point, and I'm trying to remember if there was, for any of the open positions that you have currently, have those funds been utilized for, have they been utilized already, I should say? The savings for open seats?
Personnel's cost savings, we don't get to touch those. That's all done on the finance side through Kerry Shop. We don't, our supplies and services budget is completely separate. And if I can go back to you, Councilmember Mendoza, we did our, our best to get this in the midterm with getting the contract finalized with Flock. There was back and forth between city attorney, our attorneys, and their attorneys to get the, to get it finalized. I will tell you that my first option on anything budget-related is midterm, mid-year, or two-year budget cycle. Because it works much better for everybody involved. In this case, we were shooting for the December deadline because Vigilant is a twelve-month cycle, to January to January. And when we decided to move forward with this, it would have pivoted just perfectly in December. We're not paying them anymore, we're paying Flock moving forward, and there would be no disruption in capturing of license plates and safety for the community. It didn't work out that way, and that's why we brought it as a standalone.
I understand that, I think my disappointment is that it would, that's a disappointment right there. But my other one is, I cannot fathom why someone would put a quarter of a million dollar spend on consent, especially on something that is so important, and we have to talk about it. Like, I just, I, I mean, that, to me, I was, I was almost offended by it. And I don't know who makes that decision, if it's your boss or you, I don't know. But I don't ever want to see something that, something like this on consent ever again. It, it, we should talk, like, look at all this conversation we're having-
Sure.
Because it's important, and I, to me, that was, I was personally offended.
Okay, part of it is, this was an expansion of, of an existing program, going to a different company. That was the thought line behind part of it, is we already have ALPR, we're going from Vigilant to Flock. And there, we didn't, I didn't think this was gonna be this big of an issue, to be honest with you. We have the system in place now, so we're not backpedaling.
Well, we don't have this, this is a very different system, right? If it wasn't different, you wouldn't want to change vendors, it's a very different system.
We're changing vendors because of our Axon contract and because of techno-
Yeah, but because you like this technology better. So it's very, very different technology, it's way more intrusive. So we can agree to disagree on this one?
Yes, we can.
Um, so, yeah.
Madam Mayor, have a motion if there's no additional discussion.
Okay, move forward.
And I would like to share my screen, I just learned that I have that ability to do that from city manager. Thank you, Tim. I move to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement and all necessary documents with Flock Group. Additionally, I move that the resolution include language establishing the following policies. Prohibition on sharing data for certain law enforcement purposes. Law enforcement officers shall not share information obtained through Flock Group technology with federal agencies for the purpose of immigration enforcement or abortion-related investigations. Transparency and accountability measures. The city develop a transparency policy that allows civil rights organizations such as the NAACP and the ACLU to conduct periodic, periodic audits of data usage to ensure compliance with city policies and safeguarding community trust. I think this motion will ensure that while enhancing public safety, we uphold the principles of privacy, accountability, and protection with civil rights with our community.
I will second that motion.
All in favor?
Just, just before you vote, can I just ask the chief? Chief, do you need any further clarification as to the proposed policies?
No, there's already safeguards in the law preventing us from sharing data with federal agencies at this point, so.
Can I add just one clarification, Vice Mayor? For abortion-related investigations, would we want to make it voluntary abortion? Not if it's done in a, where someone's forcing someone to go do it, and they don't want to? I think there's a difference between someone wanting to actually do it than then being forced. Or, I don't know, you can think of it in a legal way.
That, that wasn't, my, I was just saying in general, any investigations combined? Oh. Okay.
You see what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, wait, 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 wait. Okay. Not that it matters, but, okay.
My question would be, regardless of what the policies are that Flock already has in place, about anything outside of state lines, et cetera, et cetera. Is there anything else that we can do to more protect this data, to more prevent any kind of false positives, to make sure that there is no, no kind of targeting happening lower-income areas, or, or areas where people of color, color are more likely to live? I, I just want to, I mean, I understand that these are already part of it, but, but whatever we can do to make things even more protected for people who need protection, I would like to see if there's any other language anyone can think of to add.
I could, I, I, I played around with this one, I, I didn't see because the whole purpose was to share, which was brought up in here. But I just want to make a statement that even if there is something, I want us to have our own policy that has this language here. So, because I don't see the transparency and accountability measures in any of our policies that says something to this. So, I want us to have our own policies in place that say this exact language, and, and expand it upon if we can.
I would agree about that, that language being absolutely necessary, but I'm, I'm just wondering if there's anything else we can think to add that would add any other additional layers of protection?
Motion part on here, not my little two cents. What? Oh, no, I'm sorry.
So I think the police department has an anti, like, discrimination or racial profiling bias policy. So I don't know if we want to maybe connect it to this?
I would certainly not be a-
I would certainly not be opposed to adding that if you're okay with that as a friendly amendment.
Can I ask real quickly, Chief, are you anticipating that you would satisfy these requirements by using a Lexipol policy?
Yes, that is our current policy.
Okay, so Lexipol provides policies to law enforcement agencies across the state. And so they're fairly uniform unless the individual agencies customize them. And so I'm looking at the Alameda Police Department's ALPR policy. And it does include sections on accountability and safeguards that would look to prevent unwarranted intrusions into privacy or use for harassment or intimidation purposes. So if the chief were to use a Lexipol policy, he would be looking for similar type language from Lexipol, I assume. Is that correct, Chief?
Yes, our policy is Lexipol. And like I said, the reason we made, we just added some changes. Lexipol is based off federal law, state law, and then there are best practices. And then you can add your own content beyond that. So if there's something that here that we don't currently capture in our policy, we'll be more than happy to add.
Just for me to add to this, you said one specifically in Alameda County. So you said, what was that one?
I was just looking at the Alameda Police Department's Lexipol policy. And for example, it prohibits use of the ALPR system for immigration enforcement or investigations. It is a violation of the policy to use the ALPR system solely based on a person or groups perceived race, gender, religion, political affiliation, nationality, ethnicity, sexual orientation, disability, or other protected classifications. So I think it arrives at some of the concerns, Madam Mayor, that you're expressing regarding, including refined safeguards for groups that may be concerned about the use of this technology.
Our current policy, 463.7 prohibited uses, covers everything that the city attorney just read.
So then that I incorporate it, just incorporate it in, right? So those are the ones we talked about and incorporating, not getting rid of the transparency piece.
What about the section if the lawsuit does go through about being able to quickly exit this contract?
Well, if we had something that says we have equipment that's a Fourth Amendment violation, we'd have to get rid of it. I mean, just on the nature of it, I don't think we need to put anything in writing. I mean, I think they would just by nature do it. So does your second?
It does not change my second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any item moves forward? Thank you.
Through the mayor. If the council might consider moving to item F6, we do have the applicant for that item present in the council chamber. Appreciate it, thank you.
Yes, we can certainly do that. For item F6, Amanda Chaney, Recreation Supervisor, will present the next item on an agreement for lighting, stage, and sound services.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. This evening, staff prepared a report for you detailing a stage, sound, and lighting agreement for the remainder of 2025 and 2026. Staff posted a request for quotes in November of 2024 with a deadline of January 6, 2025. We did receive three proposals for this bid. After reviewing all the bids and accounting for the lowest bids, staff recommended, recommends splitting the agreement between two vendors. A smaller two-year contract was awarded to DPH Sound for the Veterans Day Parade, the Fourth of July Parade, the Christmas tree lighting, and movies in the park. And the not-to-exceed amount for that agreement was $35,000, spanning two years. Staff recommends entering into an agreement with Full Force Audio for our Juneteenth celebration and our Concert in the Park series. They were able to provide us the lowest cost while maintaining high expectations that we have for our city events. This budget has been allocated for these funds, and we would not need to increase the general budget. The not-to-exceed cost for this agreement would be $136,500. This agreement does not include any improvements to City Park or our existing equipment. The equipment is used by them and brought in by them each per event. And the approval of this item does use allocated funds for specific events, including Juneteenth and concerts in the park. So this agreement would just allow us to use those funds with them. And staff is available for any questions, as well as Sandro Costa, the owner of Full Force Audio.
Thank you, Amanda. Do we have any clarifying questions? Wonderful. Opening up public comment, please.
At this time, the public is permitted to address the city council on this item. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand to speak. If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the city clerk. I do not have any speaker cards in person or hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you. Closing public comments. Any council discussion?
I just want to say I'm excited. I love our concerts. Thank you so much, all of you.
Would you like to make a motion?
As detailed in the staff report, I move to adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Full Force Audio.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And no opposition. The item moves. Thank you.
Sorry you guys had to wait so late.
Moving back to item F5, our next item is regarding accepting accessory dwelling unit grant funds. Tim Nielsen, Development Services Manager, will present.
I think my sharing capabilities to the opposite side of the chamber might be off. But I'm going to try one more time. If not, I'm going to see if Assistant City Manager might be able to help me again. I think that's you, Tim.
That looks familiar, yes. Thank you and good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. This item is for the acceptance of grant funds that the city has received and then also to adjust the 2024-2025 operating budget in order to be able to expend those funds. This is for an HCD-sponsored program. It's part of the former Senate District 7 under Glacier. It's a pilot program. And the intent of the program is to facilitate development of up to 350 accessory dwelling units across that Senate district, within 15 towns and cities in both Alameda and Contra Costa counties that are within that Senate district. The program does have a sunset built into it. Any units that qualify for the program and receive a certificate of occupancy or are able to otherwise final their permit prior to September 30 of 2026 would qualify for those grant funds. And this program, specific to Brentwood, does support our Housing Element Action, H1B, by not only researching and educating the public about available funds, but also receiving those funds and then making those funds available to members of the Brentwood community. As far as the fiscal impact goes, the grant amount is for just a little bit over $121,000. That's based on the Brentwood population as of January 1, 2024, based on the State Department of Finance numbers, and a dollar value assigned to each of that population count. So that's where the $121,000 comes from and allows for equal distribution across those 15 cities. The program does not require the city of Brentwood to provide any matching funds. And the grant amounts would range somewhere between $2,500 and $15,000, depending on the size of the unit and depending on whether or not there are any income restrictions recorded in conjunction with that unit as desired by the property owner. Funds would be distributed on a first-come, first-served basis, depending on when the units are actually finalized and those are ready to be occupied. So not necessarily in the order of application, but in the order of completion is how those funds would be expended and distributed to those who qualify for the program. And then at the conclusion of the pilot program, any funds that remain for any of the 15 cities would be eligible for redistribution within the program area. So again, the impact of the city's budget here, because of no matching funds requirements, would be no cost to the city fiscally. So the recommendation before the council tonight is to accept that grant and to budget for the expenditure of those funds for this budget year. Thank you. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Tim. Any questions? Yes.
How are we going to monitor the low-income restricted ADUs? What? Oh.
In order to qualify for the low-income restricted funds and those higher dollar values associated with the grant funds for those low-income restrictions, there are deed restrictions that would be placed on those properties. And then there are additional steps that the property owners would have to go through in order to be able to verify income eligibility when they're renting those units.
Okay, thank you.
To continue with that, the enforcement would mean there would actually, there would be follow-up with the owners of the ADUs to make sure that this is actually...
And there would be check-ins and ongoing verification that, yes, they did in fact verify the income eligibility during the leasing and filling process for those units.
Okay, thank you. And the other thing is just a clarification, just for kind of public information. Can you just give a brief overview of whether we have control over design standards and what standards in control we do have for these ADUs?
For that, I might actually defer over to our acting community development director to tackle that from a planning perspective.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. There are some standards built into the ADU ordinance that was recently adopted. For detached units, it's really about matching roof slope, siding materials. It's not a lot that we can do from a design standpoint. And then, of course, the junior ADUs are all interior to the existing unit itself. So there's really no design considerations for those.
And no setbacks or anything like that, or?
We can regulate setbacks, but they're basically four feet from property lines.
We can still do that, okay.
And other structures on site, correct?
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
No other questions, then? Okay, moving into public comment.
If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand to speak. If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the city clerk. We'll take comments from those participating in the council chamber, followed by those participating via Zoom. I do not have any speaker cards in person or hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you, Amanda. Closing public comments. Any council discussion or a motion?
I will make a motion. Yes. Okay, here we go. As detailed in the staff report, I move to adopt the resolution amending the 2024-2025 other grants fund operating budget and allow distribution of program grant funds.
We have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And no opposition. The item moves. I think we are at aye, correct? Did I skip anything else? The request for future agenda items, do we have any?
Yeah, one's off the cuff. Can we have a future agenda item? Can we update these public art program guidelines to include structures? Like if Frank Lloyd Wright came and did a building, that would be art, and I would love it.
So real quickly, the current guidelines do provide that if we have an artist involved in it, then a structure could qualify. But I take your point. If the council is interested in adopting public art guidelines updates, you can certainly ask staff to look into that. It would not necessarily change what you can use money that's already been collected for, right? It would be a looking-forward effort, not necessarily retroactive effort because those fees were collected on an understanding from the people who've already paid them as to what they'll be used for.
Yeah, we should, I think we should, just because we don't want any other, I mean, we're stuck. But any other future council might want the option to be able to use it, you know, with an artist, like to build stuff. And I feel like we're stuck.
Staff, how many clarifying questions for the motion? I mean, for the agenda item.
So do you want us to come back with proposed revisions to address what you've just outlined or bring back on the agenda and give us some direction at that point? Just how I characterize it when it comes back.
I'll second yours. Are we voting?
No. Sorry. So you could just come back with suggestions, like of language that we could add for the dollars going forward, is what you're saying?
To create the flexibility that you've outlined.
Yes.
Yes.
Well, I mean, if you could do that, and that's easy, then we can do that and just cut through the red tape.
And we'll provide you with some legal analysis as to what sort of guardrails there might be. So you'll have the benefit of that.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
I do have one that I didn't think of. But I'd like for the council to submit either a letter in support. More importantly, I prefer a resolution in support of AB 1442, the California Essential Worker and Economic Stabilization Act bill that's being proposed.
If that's already got a Cal City's position, we already have a policy that we can send it?
Doesn't, okay.
Yeah, I don't know. Maybe pull that back and now ask it at another date.
So we're considering this one withdrawn for now?
Yeah, well, I'll withdraw. Thank you for that.
Okay, item J, requested future items, agenda items, H1, to consider requests from Vice Mayor Pearson and Councilmember Mendoza, requesting a report for discussion on all city parks, including the amphitheater, that need funds and improvements and return to the plan to apply for eligible Prop IV bond funds.
So I think this came about, both you and I, when I say you and I, Councilmember Mendoza and I, were talking with a local elected about Prop IV bond funds. And there are $10 billion, with 40% of them having to go to low-income and vulnerable populations. And I think the whole reason why we brought this forward is we don't want to wait to find out when things are due, what, or let the, you know, wait for the bond and everything to, the eligibility, the requirements. We would like to get some forward, advanced discussions going with city staff about proposals on types of requests that can be made and what uses that can be made so that it's a smoother process. And it's one that's being directed from the council versus one that's being fed to the council. So you want to add to that?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think there's dollars available. And as you can see, we spend a lot of money on our parks. So if there's any funds out there that we can get and help us do the work that we have to do, that'd be great. I don't know if any of the things that we have right now are eligible, like even, I mean, I know the soccer complex is funded, but if we could get money for the soccer complex, I mean, that would be great, or as far as sports complex. And even the amphitheater, because it is about outdoor space. So if we can get some funds for outdoor space or any improvements that we've talked on other parks that are here now that we know that they need some improvement, we should see if we can earmark, get some earmarked dollars for that. And I think, wasn't, East Bay Regional Parks is already on it. They're already submitting all of their asks. So, and I know it's a lot of money, but, you know, I think the sooner we can get our asks in, the better. So that's our agenda ask.
So clarifying questions? I have one. Would this potentially apply to the basketball court lighting?
I would need to read the details. I can't remember. I remember thinking, no, but we could read the details again.
It brought up about climate-related and propositions. So it was around wildlife, parks. Also, it could be something that we can think about for our innovation center. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. So we will open up public comments.
If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand to speak. If you're in person, please file a speaker card with the city clerk. We'll take public comments from those participating in the council chamber first, followed by those participating via Zoom. I have not received any speaker cards in person, and there are no hands raised in Zoom.
Thank you. Moving into council discussion. Well, I have to say, I think it's a great idea. If there's any chance at all of getting any kind of money to help with park improvements, I would like to certainly support that. But there's no other discussion, though. We can take a motion.
So in the motion you're going to craft, are you looking for a list of eligible unfunded projects that we have in Brentwood that we think would qualify based on what the bond ballot measure outlined? Or if you don't want to wait on the regulations that may have more details? So what is it, or what's been submitted already that you're aware of and submitted to who?
The first ask would be, the first that you propose would be the ask.
Does it have to be existing projects? Could it be something that we've considered a nice to have, but maybe could bump to the top if we had funding for it?
That staff is generating or that council has, because we would need to know what you want us to come back with.
I'm just, I mean, as far as the list that you're going to be producing of what might potentially apply... might potentially apply, is there a way to incorporate things that we've thought, well, we can't even look at that right now because we don't have funding for it? Yeah.
Both, yep.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I make a motion that staff spend time and money reviewing Proposition 4, funds available in any projects, whether they're council-generated, staff-generated, or even something that you guys have thought about and never brought forward, that we could consider applying for grant dollars to move those projects forward.
Oh, yeah, second. All in favor?
Aye.
And no opposition, the item moves forward. And I think we are at the final motion of the evening, the motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposition, we are adjourned. Thank you.